exempt is, you know, when COVID first set, one of the first things we cut was our federal lobbying. Well, intergovernmental relations is listed as a basic service and is scored a seven. If we were looking at our COVID cuts through this lens, we might not have considered our federal lobbyists as a potential cut. And then also just looking at some of the initial scoring, you know, I was a little surprised to see like community court, which would be an ongoing service to the community that would get us better outcomes in a criminal justice system, was ranked lower than, you know, a 25th anniversary for the city. Both are nice things, but in the grand scheme of things, what's actually more important in the long run? A one-day celebration or, you know, investing in something ongoing like community court? So these are just the concerns I have.
We're recording.
Yeah, those are just the concerns I have. Councilmember Shrebnik?
Yeah, I had very, very similar thoughts to Mayor Herbig, actually. And I already talked about this a little bit with Rob, so I feel like it was been addressed. But, you know, it, this, this, I really think this is clear and straightforward, but it does mask our ability to kind of look inside those programs and kind of say, you know, can we trim within a program? So there's that. And then the other piece that Mayor Herbig also mentioned. And so I wasn't going to say anything because it's not a big deal, but I think the three criteria, the comp plan one, I just am not sure about that as its own criteria, having it weighted equally with the other two. It seems like the other two are kind of big ticket, right? The council priorities and the service vision. But the comp plan, not so much. I guess it's the comp plan vision that you're putting it up against, right? So it's, it's not, it's not like the comp plan, but.
Yeah, just the vision statement, that one pager, yeah.
I guess that encapsulates a lot of the kind of overall vision of the, of the city. So, yeah, but they are, you know, you, you could make a case that they're not equal, I guess.
Yeah, and, and again, that's, you as a council could give us better guidance on that. One thing we didn't mention is that the, the service level and value, the, the service vision, those are, that's an employee-generated thing. That's something that the city manager has created with, with my coworkers. We actually gave that a half as much weight as the other two. I should have mentioned that. Because it's employee-generated and not council-generated, we decided to give that half as much weight. As far as, like, as far as, like, masking certain things or making things, certain things off limits, one thing I think we can do is further define or provide better definitions of these programs at their core, basic and enhanced levels. So for example, if you see police services at core, what does that mean? What are we, what are, what are we providing at core? And what in our mind constitutes core? So for example, we have two officer minimum staffing for police services. I believe for a city our size, that's pretty core and we have a pretty small number of police officers. If we had five officer minimum staffing and triple the number of cops, I would put a bunch of that into basic and enhanced. So, but these are the kinds of conversations we can have during the biennial budget. And you can say, okay, this is, the, the city manager didn't cut this because he believes that this is core. Why does, why, Rob, do you believe that? And let's have a conversation.
Any other questions? Councilmember File?
You know, I, I just want to echo our, our mayor and councilmember Shrebnik. I, I have to agree, you know, looking at things, looking at issues such as affordable housing, that's a basic need of our community. I don't know that I would call that enhanced and it's a priority. Yes, is it a larger ticket item? Yes. But it's a basic human need we are not yet meeting. And that's a duty of a city to provide a wide variety of housing opportunities to one's community and services. I have, I have a problem with, you know, cutting back intergovernmental relations and calling that an enhanced, a piece of work. Or economic development, those are basic issues that cities, you really are supposed to have as a core. So I, I can't imagine not really thinking with an open mindset, solution-oriented in this pathway. And it does seem very privileged to say affordable housing is an enhanced service. And I'm embarrassed, but I know everybody's doing hard work to try to iron out these wrinkles. And I know we can work together to get to the middle. Thank you.
And that's the kind of guidance you guys can give us and say, hey, I don't agree that's enhanced, that's basic. And you as a body can tell us that and that's just fine. And just one more thing, just because something is enhanced, doesn't mean that it's on the chopping block. Enhanced programs are very important programs. But they do fit the definition that we've come up with for this method, so.
Any other questions, comments?
As a sneak preview, this gets into the next budget, but we're, we're putting the finishing touches on the biennial budget. And unless Letitia tells me otherwise, I think we're fitting most, everything in the budget. So not necessarily all the new programs, but the enhanced programs that you see on that list are for the most part in the budget. And then of course, all the core and basic ones. So we did a lot of trimming around the edges and in the line items to make everything fit. But we, looks like we're gonna be able to do everything we're already doing, so.
All right, well, there's nothing more on this. We will take a recess until seven o'clock.
Hi, sorry, I was in a council meeting. Yeah, but we took a break. I got about 20 minutes. So, were you trying to get ahold of me to answer in response to my hunting you down? Okay, so Harborview Hospital. There's some real, just stressing financial news. And that labor costs are through the roof, as you well know. They're having to hire more travelers because people are getting burned out. And there's extremely high census, census. They had 524 people that were difficult to discharge. And they received no money for those. Some serious problems. And there is talk, there have been no decisions made. There is talk of trying to find other revenue in the county and looking at your $5 million. I know. Oh, I know they are. I'm fully aware of that. Except Dow gave us what, $111 million today for Crisis Center, so. It's always contingent on something, isn't it? Yeah. Yeah. I didn't know, I didn't know we were matching the money. Oh, I understand that, but I'm just trying to give you a heads up that because of the financial, you know, the rest of the time, there was no strong financial need. Now I forgot how many, how many millions were, were short on the budget. We're burning money because of cost of expenses and everything. I'll stand with you. Don't worry about it. I'm just giving you a heads up. No decisions have been made. And I know, you know, this is a project that's very dear to you. And I know that, right? Yeah. What do you think of the new health director? Yeah, he's got some very impressive credentials. Yeah. Yeah, I'm happy to talk to you about that. But he's served a number of countries in the world, so he's bringing lots of, lots of experience with him. Good, good. Yeah.
Hey Lori, testing, can you hear us by chance?
Okay. I'll tell her to send you an email. Yeah. That's fine. Yeah, not a problem.
Do you hear Anastasia say anything?
Uh, no, not really. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you because you're on my phone, but.
You're, you're not, you're not heavy.
Okay.
You're, you're a junior. Oh, I'm sorry to hear that. I do too, but.
So Michelle's trying to get this up on the screen so that you.
Yeah, good luck. Okay.
Can you, can you project it?
Well, you know, I have, I've never had one. I do, I've done, I do the other tests. The one where you give them a sample of your stool and look for stuff. Well, then, see, this is my personal, I do not want to give you health information, but my personal opinion is to hell with it. Nobody's sticking anything in my butt. Shannon, oh, the back just stopped. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if, if it gives you the same, it tells you the same thing, well, then hell with it. Give me the sample. But, you know, hey, I'm not one to give you health advice. Yeah. 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 Well. But can't they, can't they test for that? Okay, okay. Okay. Yes, yes. And that one. What? You are getting older. There you go. You're just a young, you're just a youngster. Okay. Thank you. Okay, take care. Bye.
You know that it's now open in winter. I don't know what the policy is in the winter. It doesn't feel, I have a limited number because.
I don't know you. Financial, yeah. Nice to meet you, Holly and Trelle. I just had, we just had our 40th reunion this weekend. It was so fun. We had a ton, like 115 people. They had it in W here at a restaurant. It was fantastic. It was really, it was way more fun than I thought. It was kind of like, I called a couple friends and said, you guys want to go? We went and it was really.
Oh, we had a true COVID reunion last year. It was at Denny Park and it was like super hot. It was fun.
I actually wanted to do an elder one percent, I actually had a thing where people don't even. Okay for it. So it was great. It was really fun. I think the problem is there's a whole bunch of people that remember us that just got a $3,000 settlement and then quit swimming for two years. And so they would like to have their kids, that they, you know, they paid for this pool that they would like to have their kids. I mean, it's really well used by the community now. I mean, it's, it's a, yeah, it's good and, you know, for people that live right there, it's, I think, it can't be hard.
I heard, I read, no, I read an article the other time about western, some study of western huckleberries. It was kind of unhelpful and very vague, but, but it was like, we have not seen huckleberries blooming lately or something. So I, you could make like a little scientific study maybe yourself and keep track, you know.
Wait, you mean like, did it, did it have berries? Because I do think it's had berries.
Okay, that's, that's awesome. That makes me feel better.
It's, and it's only one, I think I actually have three. It's only one that's really struggling.
Oh, okay.
Right, it's, it's sort of under the tree, so it keeps trying to get, I think all the water is, you know, fighting against the evergreens.
Yeah.
But like, I think they've had berries.
Oh, cool. Okay, good, good. All right, that makes me feel better.
And it, yeah, I think it's, I think it's okay.
Cool. Cool, cool.
Hey Dawn, can you hear us? Hey Dawn, can you hear us? Yes, we hear you.
Yes.
I see Angelo, I tell him here.
We want to wish all of our guests in the virtual world, um, a good evening and let you know that, just like we mentioned earlier, we are experiencing some Zoom technical issues for the hybrid portion of the meeting. So if you are on Zoom and you are hoping to give virtual comment, we encourage you to make your way to City Hall if possible.
What time do you think we'll get out?
The meeting will resume on site. We're going to continue to try to have the hybrid offering during the meeting, but in the event that we cannot, just know that the meeting will continue on site.
Depends on how the public comments go.
Should we place that?
Right.
We can.
What time do you think we'll be out today?
Is that okay? We can bet on that?
So, so, but Joe probably doesn't want to part of it.
That's right.
Because then it's collusion and we get in trouble with the PDC.
He knows our parents. If you ask, they're discussing what time to end the evening. It doesn't sound that sinister.
Not for yet.
That's right. It doesn't sound that sinister, but you're only asking on bets, right? You're only asking like for a non-binding bet or idea.
Oh, that is binding.
Oh, okay, all right, then I'm not touching it. I'm paranoid.
If you lose, if you lose, you got to pay. That's binding.
Oh, there you go. That's right.
Come on, you're a lawyer, you should have thought of that one.
There you, there you. That's good.
I, I would have no idea.
I would.
Hi, Rita, checking in with you. Can you hear me okay?
Right, right, right. I mean, they got a place for me, so he was hunting. But it's a free country.
Kenmore City Council is now in session. I'd like to call the regular meeting to order. Uh, will the clerk please take the roll?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Marshall.
Present.
Councilmember Coogler.
Present.
Councilmember Coogler.
Present.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Here.
Mayor Herbig.
Here.
Deputy Mayor O'Kane.
Present.
Councilmember File.
Present.
All present.
All right, would you all please stand and join me in the flag salute? All right, next on the agenda, we have approval of the agenda. Unless there's any objections, the agenda will stand approved as published. Here are no objections. The agenda is approved. Next on the agenda is a proclamation for Indigenous Peoples' Day and National Native American Heritage Month, uh, to be accepted by Tuleup artist Hugs Moses. Uh, whereas indigenous people, the First People, are culturally distinct ethnic groups who are native to North America, which was later colonized and resettled by other ethnic groups. And whereas Native Americans are descendants of the original indigenous inhabitants of what are now the United States. And whereas during National Native American Heritage Month, we celebrate the rich tapestry of native peoples and honor their sacrifices, which we recognize as instructively woven into the history of this country. And whereas Native Americans have moving stories of tragedy, triumph, and perseverance that need to be shared with future generations. And whereas Native Americans have enriched our heritage and continue to add to all aspects of our society through their generosity of culture and the continued practice of teaching economic, environmental, and cultural sustainability. And whereas the city of Kenmore is committed to participating in dialogues led by tribal communities around the opportunities and the areas of self-determination, sovereignty, and cultural preservation to create an active government-to-government collaboration. And whereas on April 19th, 2021, the city council passed a unanimous motion to change the name of Squire's Landing Park to Ta'wadis, to a more appropriate, uh, look shoot seek, look shoot seed name, translating to a place where something is grown or sprouts. And whereas the city encourages the unique heritage, diverse cultures, history, and outstanding achievements of Indigenous Peoples' Day and celebrates October 10th, 2022 Indigenous Peoples' Day. And whereas we stand on the traditional land of the First People of Kenmore and honor with gratitude the land itself and the coast sailors peoples who thrive in this place alive and strong. Now therefore, I, Nigel Herbig, Mayor of Kenmore, uh, Mayor of the city of Kenmore, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim, uh, October 10th, 2022 as Indigenous Peoples' Day and November 2022 Native American Heritage Month in the city of Kenmore and invite residents to join in these observations. Observances. Do we have somebody to?
Yes.
Rob, would you like to introduce our panelist for us?
Yes, we have Hugs Moses, a local Tuleup artist here who is going to accept this proclamation.
We're going to invite the council to take a picture with our resident artist and proclamation recipient.
Hello, I'm Hugs Moses. I'm a shtehobes of Tuleup, a Tuleup tribal member. And I just wanted to tell you guys how much I appreciate you honoring and celebrating indigenous peoples and how appreciative I am of it for my art to be able to be a part of it. So, you know. Hands go up to you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is public comment. Um, we welcome our community members to the council's meeting. In this forum, the council does not engage or dialogue with the public. The primary role of the council is to listen. We will hear from our onsite guests first, followed by our virtual guests. If you're online, please use the raise hand feature now if you wish to speak. All guests must address comments to the mayor and city council. The clerk will acknowledge your request and call your name when it's your turn. Your time will start when we can confirm that we can hear you. Please state your name and city of residence for the record and keep your comments to the allotted time. We will not split your time with others or reset your time except by express approval of the presiding officer. Screen sharing is not allowed. You can submit materials to the council or clerk in advance. Please not comment about pending development of projects on which the council will make future decisions as those are quasi judicial matters and council members must limit their communications about such matters. Uh, this meeting is being recorded. And, uh, if your public comment is about the comprehensive plan amendments, including the missing middle housing, uh, we would ask you, please wait for the public hearing, which will be, uh, following this on the agenda to make your comments. Um, so thank you for the, taking the time to express your comments. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Before we take a public comment, I just wanted to let our virtual guests know that we are experiencing technical issues. So our hybrid meeting component might come to an end. Now, when that happens, we revert to our primitive times of holding just in-house onsite meetings. So if you can, we encourage you to come onsite. Otherwise, submit your testimony in writing. But it looks like you are with us right now, so do raise your hand. And when we move on to virtual comment, we'll try to hear from you. We do have two onsite people willing to speak or wanting to speak, and we'll take them in this order. Patrick O'Brien, followed by John Hendrickson, please approach the podium.
On your mark, is that go? Are you ready?
Almost. Standby.
And this is three minutes, correct? Okay.
Uh, it's three minutes for regular public comment. Public hearings are generally allocated five minutes.
Okay.
Go ahead, we'll project the time.
Hey, uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and council members, mayor. We have a problem here that we had a burn ban last week and we have a asphalt plant that does not care. They were in full operation. We submitted video and still photos of them operating during the worst burn incident that we've had this year. And even though the governor of Washington, a supposed environmentalist, says this asphalt plant is not significant.
Mr. O'Brien, I would ask you to address the council and the mayor, not the audience.
Ah, thank you. At any rate, the, uh, the asphalt plant needs to go and you folks are our last line of defense. It's a health hazard. It's, it's not beautiful in Kenmore and they do not care. They honestly do not care what our health is. And I've had city council people tell me it is just steam and we've supplied, uh, you know, scientific information to the contrary that it is very much a carcinogenic, uh, gas that's put off there. So, uh, the next thing I'd like to comment on is Oneida Drive and how many people have showed up for a meeting last week and we don't like the, the bus turnouts with concrete. We don't like some of the, uh, the, the barriers that we see. People have already hit. I mean, there, there's already been cars hitting it. And the whole premise of the, of that road being dangerous and changing angles, that is an arterial and there's a million other ways to take bikers and walkers off of Finn Hill and put them down at Burt Gilman or in the city. They don't have to be racing the cars pell mell down Oneida Drive. And just remember, in the future, the bicycles are going to be more and more electrified and so they're going to have to behave more and more like the traffic that's on the roads, have brakes that work better than the cars, that sort of thing. Lake Point, Lake Point, they continue to cap Lake Point and, and against the court order. Lake Point, Lake Point, they continue to cap Lake Point against the court order. That's illegal capping. It goes on at night, 3:00 in the morning, they're out there moving stuff around. Who's enforcing the ban on capping? They weren't supposed to be able to dig into the substrate or add to it more than two feet without getting a court order. And I have never seen that. So who's enforcing those things? And where are the boathouse payments? We have this great boathouse, and we have a group that owes $60,000, and we haven't seen that, to the best of my knowledge. Budget for programs and people. And then when we get awards from the League of Cities, we're paying $100,000 a year to be part of their thing. And it isn't a surprise that we get awards from them. Thank you.
Mr. Hendrickson?
Good evening, council members. John Hendrickson, Kenmore, Washington. This evening, there are two heavy-handed political deceptions that need to be addressed. Tonight, there are two heavy-handed political deceptions that need to be addressed. The missing middle hoax, I'll talk about later, but also the unethical political ambitions, I think, of our mayor, Nigel Herbig. I was on the council for eight years, and I was on the council in 2010 when I met Nigel. He was around 32. Said he cared about transparency and honesty in government. I gave him a transparency issue. At the time, the city was covering up a mistake on the 522 project, the design error that NUD brought to their attention, and ended up costing the city $744,000, and they were trying to cover that up. So I gave it to Nigel since he was interested. And to my surprise, he didn't get back to me. And he ended up supporting the cover-up. So I was wondering why, if you care about the city and honest government, why would you do that? And I realized it was really to gain political capital. Nigel had allies, and he knew people on the council now. He had their back, city staff too. So, you know, a very political move that's not in the best interest of this community. To document that, I've got, he was going to pick up a, if I summarize the issue, NUD, we were building the sidewalk over the sewer. And NUD said, "You can't do that, we have an easement. If you, we have to repair the sewer, you got to pay for the curb, gutter, and sidewalk." So the city said, they got mad, city manager, which was Fred Stoudard. He threw a fit, and he shut down construction. He made everyone stop because of this error. Construction company charged us $744,000. So here's Nigel picking up a document on this. On Wednesday, April 6, 2011, here is the email five days later where he tells me he hasn't got the document yet. And behind that is the payment of $744,000. Okay? Same thing's going on with this missing middle. You know, this is not coordinated, planned, growth regionally. This is Kenmore stepping out in front and would give Nigel good political capital with the far-left political group that he is associated with. So the last thing I would just say is, you know, if you go to the LinkedIn, Nigel's a political professional. Look at Lee Kuan Yew and what he says about political professionals. They should see a psychiatrist. Thank you. Lee Kuan Yew is from Singapore.
I don't see any other sign-ins for onsite public comment. Can we move on to virtual comment?
Yes.
If you'd like to give virtual public comment that's not related to the comprehensive plan or missing middle housing, please raise your hand on Zoom. I do see Stacy Valenzuela and John Peoples wishing to speak. Stacy, can you hear us? We can, go ahead. Thank you, Ms. Valenzuela. John Peoples? Mr. Peoples, can you hear us? Mr. Peoples, can you hear us? We can, go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Peoples. Mayor Herbig, I see no additional hands raised.
All right, next on the agenda is the consent agenda. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The consent agenda stands approved. Next on the agenda is a public hearing. This is a public hearing. First, we're going to have a presentation from Community Development Director Debbie Bent and Principal Planner Lori Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Before Lori gives the presentation, I would just like to remind council that all public comments that have been received to date regarding missing middle housing in particular, as well as public comments received this evening, will be consolidated into a matrix along with a staff response. And that matrix will be available for council review and discussion at your October 17th meeting. Thank you. So on that, I would like to turn this over to Lori, who will give a brief staff presentation to provide context for this evening's public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor Herbig and members of the city council. I'm Lori Anderson, as you know, but.
Can you turn the volume up? We can't hear you.
I'll try to speak more loudly. I'm sorry, I cannot. My role this evening is to provide background on this project, which actually has a number of pieces. I'll be focusing on the missing middle housing piece, since that is the most significant change from the planning commission's recommendation. The comprehensive plan changes are in a number of different elements or chapters. We have a revised vision statement, which addresses diversity, equity, and inclusion, and focuses on environmental stewardship. The revised land use element acknowledges that the city is a high-capacity transit community with the new bus rapid transit on SR 522 and a countywide growth center. And there's discussion of small-scale neighborhood commercial for walkability. The revised housing element addresses tenant protections, inclusionary affordable housing in the area of transit-oriented development near downtown, and new housing types. The revised capital facilities element suggests that surplus public property could be used for affordable housing and talks about equitably dispersing impacts of new capital facilities. The development regulation changes are in two major areas. First, the future public workshop property on Northeast 202nd is rezoned. And second, the missing middle housing regulations for duplexes and triplexes in the R6 residential zone are proposed. And as I mentioned, that's where I'll be focusing this presentation. So what is missing middle housing? So it is housing in between detached single-family homes and apartments. Last week, in Karen Perolik's presentation, she mentioned a number of missing middle housing types, including fourplexes and sixplexes. But the city is only considering duplexes and triplexes, two-unit structures and three-unit structures. What do they look like? Here's a duplex on the left, a triplex in the center. And cottage housing is another type of missing middle housing that there is policy support for, but the amendments are not being proposed at this time. Stacked triplexes, three units, one on top of each other, are not part of this proposal. That's important because Ms. Perolik also mentioned stacked triplexes, and the conclusion was those structures were too large, and so the recommendations would not allow that. Here is existing missing middle housing in our area. On the top left is a duplex in Kirkland. On the right is a brand-new duplex in Bothell. There's an older Bothell triplex and a cottage housing development in Shoreline. Interestingly, Kirkland has allowed two- and three-unit homes since 2018, and they've had about a dozen units built. Last year, they began looking at revising their regulations to support more of this type of housing. So why are we considering missing middle housing? Kenmore is a first-string suburb of Seattle. It's close to jobs and will soon have great high-capacity transit access. These are the three policy documents that the city has to comply with. The first is the State Growth Management Act, which says in the urban growth boundary, and Kenmore is in the urban growth boundary, we must include provisions for moderate-density housing options, including duplexes and triplexes. Vision 2050, that is our multi-county planning policy, and that is handled by the Puget Sound Regional Counselor, PSRC, says we need to expand housing capacity for moderate-density housing to bridge the gap between single-family and more intensive multifamily development. And then the King County policies, these are all stacked like nesting dolls, says that we should expand capacity for moderate-density housing throughout the jurisdiction, pardon me, especially in areas currently zoned for lower-density single-family detached housing. Why is this? There we go. So what problems are we trying to solve with missing middle housing? You all know that we're in a housing crisis. That was declared a few years ago and is partly the result of a regional housing supply shortage. There's also a lack of housing types in between single-family residences and larger apartment buildings, skyrocketing housing costs, and a historic exclusion of those with lower incomes, which are disproportionately people of color from some neighborhoods. I don't know what to tell you here. So what are the benefits of missing middle housing? First, it increases housing supply. As we mentioned, we have a shortage in the region. It provides more housing choice with the changing demographics in the area, more single-person households, more seniors. It provides more housing choice to people who might not feel comfortable in a large, single-family home. Units are more attainable than a single-family house, and we'll look at a slide about that next. It prevents sprawl and helps fight climate change. More units closer to jobs means less driving. It also supports transit, and is consistent with the regional policies that I just mentioned. So in terms of making housing more attainable, the median Kenmore household income is about $115,000. In May, the median-priced house in Kenmore was $1.3 million, and that's gone down some. The income needed to purchase that would be 265% of the median income. For missing middle housing, the estimate is it requires 80% to 120% of median income. This is not low-income housing. This is housing that should be affordable to those who make an average income. So what is the city council recommending? The recommendation is to allow duplexes and triplexes throughout the single-family residential R6 zone. We haven't looked at the R1 and R4 zones as environmental studies are not complete, and those areas were assigned to lower density because of systems of steep slopes and wetlands. Policies support future discussion of smaller houses on smaller lots and cottage housing. Where would it be permitted? The gold color, orange color. This is the map of Kenmore. You can see downtown has a big black line around it. And the R6 area is the area shown in orange, which would now become medium-density residential where duplexes and triplexes would be permitted. So an important thing that we've heard about this housing is that it needs to be house-scale, and it needs to be compatible with surrounding buildings, with surrounding houses. So the regulations specify the size. The lot has to be a certain dimension, and there's a maximum building size. This is not something that's applied to single-family development. Your building can only be so wide and so deep. There's a maximum two-and-a-half-story height, 30 feet, versus single-family height, which is currently 35 feet. As far as design, the building has to face the street. The entry has to be identified. The garage size and location are controlled so that you don't have garage doors fronting the streetscape as the main feature. And the multifamily tree preservation rules would apply, which are more stringent than those for existing single-family. There would be reduced parking requirements. Within a quarter-mile of the city's two main transit corridors, .75 stall per unit would be required, consistent with state law. Outside the quarter-mile, the recommendation is one stall per unit. There would be no surface parking in front of the building, and there are design standards for the driveway. These next illustrations compare the size of a possible new single-family house and the duplex and triplex. The size of the single-family house was taken from a study of several 2021 building permits. So this is an average. The total square footage is 4,100 square feet. And you can see. The total square footage is 4,100 square feet, and you can see that the duplex, because of the width and depth requirements, would have a smaller square footage than the new single-family house, containing two units instead of one. Similarly, here's that same single-family house. Here's the triplex on a 50-by-108-foot lot. And that lot size was chosen because that's the minimum lot size in the R6 zoning district. So again, the total square footage of the triplex is 2,400 square feet with three units versus that single-family house having one unit at 4,100 square feet. Again, we're looking at new single-family building permits. This is an example site plan. This is actually the North Shore Fire District site, and we asked Optico's Design to do a draft site plan on this actual site, using the dimensions that are required by the regulations. You can see the proposed triplexes, two yellow triplexes and one yellow duplex are very comparable in size to the surrounding single-family residences that you can see on the aerial. So how has the public been notified of this proposal? I don't know that I'll go through everything here, but we started mailing articles in spring of 2021. They were mailed, these go to all households, spring, fall, winter, and spring of 2022. There were e-news publications, as you can see, over several months, beginning in September 2021 and concluding in August. In July 2021, we did a citywide survey. An invitation was sent to all addresses twice. We had a Planning Commission mailing list. In November, we held a housing forum. There was a public hearing on the Planning Commission's recommendations in May of this year, and a postcard was mailed to all addresses with special outreach to those who use Spanish. We've had website and social media posts, and then the informational flyer that I'm sure all of you have seen, that was mailed to all Kenmore addresses. So with that, I will turn it back to the mayor to open the public hearing.
Do we want to do any questions from Council first, or should we start the public hearing? What would you recommend?
Given the size of the audience, I would recommend starting the public hearing.
Yeah. All right, this is the public hearing segment of the agenda, held to hear testimony specific to the comprehensive plan amendments, including missing middle housing. If you speak on a different topic, you may be redirected to keep your remarks on subject. You'll be granted five minutes to speak. The same public comic rules apply, including stating your name, city residence, addressing your comments directly to the City Council, not splitting your time with others. If your comments have been fully expressed by preceding speakers, we encourage you to summarize your statements by stating your name, city residence, and saying that you concur or agree with a previous speaker. We'd have a lot of people to get through, so we would encourage folks to do that if possible. We will hear testimony from our onsite guests first, followed by virtual guests. Thank you to everybody for taking the time to come out here and participate. And I will also say that, given the large crowd tonight, after a couple of hours, the Council may choose to approve an order to continue the public hearing at a specific date and time, which would extend the opportunity to submit written and verbal testimony into the record. We do want to hear from everybody. We do have other business that we need to get to at some point this evening, and there are, from what I understand, over 40 folks signed up, so we do want to make sure everybody has a chance to be heard. Madam Clerk, do you want to, oh, I declare the public meeting, public hearing open. Madam Clerk, do you want to call the first speakers?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have 41 residents or guests signed up to speak, and we also have a large crowd of 59 attendees virtually with us. We're going to take you in batches of five, and I suggest that you line up behind one another at the podium so that we can hear as many voices as possible. The first five people we'd like to hear from are Jeffrey Chisholm, Kipton Kennedy, Ken Dunn, and Nathan McDonald, and Lavra Samuelson. Please approach the podium. Go ahead.
My name is Jeffrey Chisholm. My wife and I have lived in the same house here in Kenmore for 40 years. I'm retired now, but I used to be a lawyer. I represented developers, home builders, site work contractors, construction companies, and Washington Federal Savings and Loan, the largest residential construction lender in the state of Washington, then, and I believe now. So let me start with what I think we can all agree on. Everybody would like to see affordable housing for everyone else. But this is the real world, so how is that accomplished? And the answer is, there is a trade-off. There is a mix between density and use, and I want to address those issues in three phases. Where are we now? What happens if this plan is implemented? And then, the more contentious issue, do we want to go there? Where are we? Kenmore, single-family home sites are essentially built out. There may be a lot here and there, but for the most part, the single-family homes are built. And virtually all new development, you don't need to drive more than about four blocks to see our multifamily units, with a nice, healthy mix of large apartments, small apartments, duplexes, condominiums, townhomes, you name it, it's going up. Short plats with two small homes on a larger lot. Most of the developments since the 1980s have been in planned unit developments with smaller lots, more expensive homes built out within five feet of the lot line. They're not going to be affected by this plan. It's going to be the pre-'80s, larger lots that cover the hillside and across the slough there, larger lots, older homes. My suspicion is that anything in the $1 million range and down is going to be vulnerable to being torn down and reconstructed with a duplex, triplex. Kenmore is probably one of the very last places close into the city with something even marginally called affordable entry-level homes for single families. You drive down the street, there's no shortage of multifamily homes, there's no shortage of units or apartment units, but there are no new single-family homes going up, and certainly nothing in the 1.5 and below range. You look at Redfin, there are 76 listings for homes, 26 multifamily, 50 are single-family, 17 of those are under $1 million. Now, the real demand in the shortage isn't for rentals, it isn't for condos, it isn't for apartment buildings, it's for single-family detached residential homes. That's what people want to get into. We all have stories of friends and neighbors and kids and relatives that are frustrated they can't get their first single-family home. I don't know, I just don't hear about people being frustrated they can't find the appropriate 600-foot studio apartment. But people want to get into their first homes. The aspiration of people is that. I believe all of you live in single-family homes, and the mayor, under your website, you went out of the way to highlight the fact that you and your wife moved here to look for a place to raise your daughter where they could purchase their first home. So you're no different than everyone else who wants to move here. So my question is, what's going to happen if you approve this? I think the answer is, most of the units under $1 million or $1.2 million are going to get torn down. The entry level will disappear. Young families will not be able to move into the neighborhood. There'll be even more rental in the duplex homes than there are now, and I think we have, what, 60 condos going on here at Murphy's already? And these are going to be high-end rentals because they're going to be new, they'll be in single-family neighborhoods, and they'll need to cover the cost. You are going to change the character of the city of Kenmore in one fell swoop. The pre-60 developments are going to be devastated. So the question is, why do this? It's not in the interest of the existing residents, it's not what the citizens want. I've never seen the neighborhood so upset by this. So you, as politicians, can get away with pushing the boundaries a little bit and ignoring your voters' wishes. I submit to you, this is your bridge too far. Your citizens are very unhappy about this. If you approve this, I guarantee you, each one of you will face a well-funded, likable, moderate opponent in the next election.
Thank you. Kipton?
We have a lot of people to get through, and we can't do it with a bunch of cheering. I would ask the folks, please, keep the cheering to a minimum so folks actually have time to speak.
That's a tough act to follow. I'm Kipton Kennedy. I've lived here in Kenmore for about 10 years with my wife. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This is a tough job. Before I get into some negative stuff, I just want to thank you. You've been very happy for 10 years. It's tough work. We oppose the rezoning of the missing middle rezoning project. I watched last week's presentation on the missing middle housing. One of the assumptions there is that if we build these duplexes and triplexes, somehow the cars magically disappear. I don't know how this works. We have a good, a couple of good counterexamples here. We've got Wallingford and Ballard, right? These are high-density, tightly-built houses with no garages. This is a great example. And guess what? Cars line the streets of Ballard, and they want, they're not giving up their cars. They're keeping their cars in these high-density, no-garage environments. The cars aren't going away. It's a bad assumption. I'll even point you to the presentation last week, and one of the presenter's own examples is a city in Nebraska, a missing middle development in Nebraska, no garages in this dense environment. The streets are lined with cars. They're not giving up their cars. It's a bad assumption. I received your flyers and emails. Thank you for all the great communication. Appreciate that. I would hope that, after all of this marketing effort and communications from you to us, if we, the people, the majority, don't want this, we say no, I hope you will respect that. This, I mean, I appreciate, I mean, this is all great lobbying effort from you to us. That's great. This is all communication, but if we say no to that, please respect it. I, I'm concerned this is a pet project of a zealous few people, and that's fine, but if the people speak and they don't want it, please respect that. It's frustrating. Last thing I want to say is, I disagree with some decisions this Council makes. That's fine. We can fix a lot of things. We can change things. This is a lasting mistake if it's a mistake. Kenmore changes permanently. There's no going back when it, when you rezone residential like this. This can't be repaired if you make this change, and it's bad. What if there's six X cars, no one takes transit because it's still inconvenient and dangerous, there's no walkable businesses? What if it, what if the worst happens? Two generations, people still have their cars lining the streets? Now you've just made this an urban mess. It's an urban mess, and it was one of the most desirable places to live. It's too risky to make this drastic of a change. That's all. Thank you.
My name is Ken Dean, and I'm a Kenmore resident. I've lived here with my wife for 39 years, and I'm against the missing middle housing proposal as well. I agree with the two speakers before me. When I served on the Kenmore Downtown Task Force, the City Council pledged, committed, to protect the single-family nature of the residential portions of the city, and to concentrate the growth and density that the Growth Management Act requires in the downtown core. And this does away with all that. And I actually feel like it might be possible to come up with standards to allow duplexes, not triplexes, duplexes within guardrails that are put up for developers to follow. Developers aren't bad people. They just have a business, and the business is to wring the maximum amount of money out of a piece of land, and then they collect their money, and then they leave. I don't think they're bad people, they're just doing their job. But it's we residents who are left to deal with the problems that are created. And the problems I see are mostly traffic and parking. And what I see is that when roads are developed around here recently, all the on-street parking is removed. And the way I understand the middle housing, missing middle housing thing, is that the on-street parking is removed, and then the on-site parking is reduced. So that for a duplex, instead of two spaces for parking on-site as we have with single-family, it's one. But most of those, if we're bringing in family, if we're bringing in families with kids, there's going to be two cars. And because you can't, you can't work and commute on the bus to someplace that isn't on a bus line or a reasonable distance away. And you can't take your kids to school while the other parent is attending a meeting or something like that. And so you need, you need it. Someday, we'll have fewer cars, but that time is no time soon. We're doubling down on cars, you know, with climate change and with the high price of gas. We see people not so much going to transit, but they're buying electric cars, and there's public money and private money going to charging stations and so forth. So we're doubling down on cars. We're not moving away from cars. And so what I see is that if we, if we don't have on-street parking, and we don't have a reasonable number of parking places for, on-site for each of these things, it's going to be a problem for the neighborhood. And they're, where are they going to do? They're going to do what they do now on 153rd or 180 Drive, where they've removed all the on-street parking. They're going to park up the road at, in front of a neighbor's house, and then those people are going to have to park up the road, you know, sometimes for theirs, their parking. And we need to have parking for people to have birthday parties, Seahawks parties, whatever. People visit, and there will be parking. I also see a potential public safety issue where, you know, there are more forest fires every year, and we have forests here, lots of them, hundreds of acres of them, and God forbid we should ever have a fire. But if we have a fire in a place where there's one road in and one road out, and parking problems, it could be an issue getting the emergency equipment in there and evacuating the people, and especially if there are duplexes and triplexes, it just makes it worse. So here's what I think we should do. Let's allow on-street parking for duplexes, have strict requirements to deal with parking for duplexes, not allow triplexes, at least at this point, not anytime soon, and require reasonable on-site parking for any duplex. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nathan McDonald, and I am a Kenmore resident. North Lake Heights Platte was designed and built in Kenmore in the 1950s. Every property in the Platte contains a deed restriction that prohibits more than one dwelling per lot, any dwelling of not less than 1,200 square feet, and a structure of no more than a single-story in height above ground level. In 2013, a property owner in the Platte decided that he wanted to demolish the existing structure and construct a two-story, single-family dwelling. The community, which includes a current City Council member, determined that the proposed construction did not fit the character of the neighborhood, and, more importantly, that it violated the deed restrictions attached to each property in the Platte. Members of the community initiated legal action against the property owner who wished to deviate from the deed restrictions. The council member was a named plaintiff. In his sworn declaration, the husband of the council member attested to the, quote, "exceptional view of Lake Washington from their home." He further recalled a previous event in the mid-2000s, when he informed a neighbor adjacent and down the hill who was contemplating a second-story addition, that such construction would violate the property's deed restrictions. The neighbor acquiesced and proceeded without modification to the property's roof line that would have impinged on any view. Returning to 2013, the legal action proceeded and was decided by King County Superior Court Judge John R. Rule in court finding number 13-2-07669. in Court Finding Number 13-2-07669-1. Judge Rule made several findings and conclusions, including that the common scheme of deed restrictions has not been abandoned, that the purposes of the common scheme of deed restrictions is to preserve open space, light, and air, territorial and lake views, and homeowner privacy, and that these considerations continue to be achieved by the restrictions, which have been substantially complied with for over 60 years. And that it is in the public interest to enforce the deed restrictions, which enhance and promote the most effective use of the properties in the Platte. Judge Rule granted injunctive relief to the plaintiffs and determined that the deed restrictions are indeed enforceable. These deed restrictions prohibit any duplex or triplex construction in the North Lake Heights Platte as contemplated by the proposed code amendments to be voted on. In consequence, not only will the council member's exceptional view of Lake Washington be preserved, but the types of claimed missing middle dwellings will not be allowed to be built in her neighborhood because the lots cannot be short-platted and may only accommodate a single dwelling of a minimum of 1,200 square feet per lot despite the proposed rezone of the community from R6 to RM. We are tired of those who govern attempting to force change because they claim to know what is best for the community, particularly in the face of so much community opposition. I request that the misguided proposal to rezone such a sizable portion of Kenmore be voted down, particularly by Councilmember Shrebnik, who will be exempt from any of the proposed changes and associated development as a matter of law. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Laura Samuelson. I live here in Kenmore. My husband and I have been homeowners here in Kenmore since Before the City Incorporated and our current address was actually Bothell. We have an existing business here in Kenmore and have raised our children here who attended North Shore Schools where I was a classroom volunteer and involved with the PTSA. We helped build the playground at St. Edward and enjoy seeing families use and enjoy it throughout the year. Our family knew both Caleb Shoup and Sarah Paulson and were pleased with the council's efforts to make the streets and crosswalks in Kenmore safer for pedestrians and bicyclists. We're happy this council supported Daniel's real estate to painstakingly transform the decaying seminary building into a lovely hotel and restaurant. That said, the council may want to dismiss my comments to follow as another "not-in-your-backyard" Kenmore homeowner. However, I do believe my views represent thousands from across our city. Interestingly, I did go back and read the King County voter pamphlet verbiage for three council members in 2021, and none of them did mention a desire or intent to upzone our neighborhoods throughout the city. My husband and I, as I'm sure most of you, chose to live, pay taxes, raise our family, and be a part of this community because it is different from Seattle. Because the schools are good, because the crime is low, because both police and emergency response times are fast, and because the neighborhood streets are not lined wall-to-wall with cars. Going back only a few years ago, our city's quality of life with a high percentage of owner-occupied homes showing pride of ownership was something positive. So yes, in short, I feel protective of Kenmore's single-family neighborhoods and I don't support upzoning throughout. What I can support is carving out limited arterial bus-supported streets. Consider the well-done multi-use areas such as Totem Lake, Wanita Village, or Wooden Creek in Woodenville. While this approach may not fulfill ideological goals, I believe it would be supported by the vast majority of Kenmore residents. Why isn't that your objective? We simply don't want to increase density throughout our neighborhoods and with all of the resulting collateral damage such as we see throughout the city of Seattle. We don't want to be forced out of our cars. We want to keep our parks beautiful and safe. Yes, you may have pending permit applications from developers and you may be motivated by the opportunity for more property tax revenues, but at some point, and hopefully now you've gone too far, the zoning revisions in the 25-page document linked on the city website demonstrates the determination to completely eliminate the phrase "single-family" and also create all kinds of property setbacks and property exemptions to accommodate triplexes and the like throughout our neighborhoods. There, there are lots of questions and motivations that I believe need vetting before this zoning overhaul moves forward. And I believe that something as far-reaching in scope should in fact be voted on by the Kenmore residents and not pushed through the council. Zoning, zoning codes along with the city's budget are the two biggest power levels, levers, the council possesses. Yes, there's an organized, well-funded minority who want to see this put through as quickly as possible. At the same time, it is reasonable and rational for the existing citizens of Kenmore to want to protect our neighborhoods and quality of life and continue living in a place that isn't Seattle. In closing, this massive comprehensive zoning restructure throughout Kenmore, if this, if this is passed, I urge you who are here tonight or listening online to seriously consider running for city council. Lawyers are being consulted, petitions are circulating, and de-annexation opportunities are being reviewed.
Thank you. Your time is up. Drew Samuelson. The, the clerk does request that we keep our applause to a minimum or hold till the end so we can hear from multiple voices. Drew Samuelson, Harry Pomeranz, Cara Messias, Peter Lance, and David Kirsten.
Hi, I'm Drew Samuelson. I'd heard that you were talking about that you had reached out to the people and I, you know, I appreciate your efforts about missing in the middle. I was thinking that something this important should be put to a vote. And I was thinking that the, the city council and mayor of Kenmore should be representing the people of Kenmore and not be part of a larger agenda to force, you know, communities into some national guideline. Back in 2015, there was something called the Fair Housing Guidebook, a rural guidebook, H-E-D-A-F-F-H. And it's spelled out in a, in a 200-page document of what, what is the federal government hopes to achieve in the communities. And I fear that what it, what their goal is, is that urban areas vote a certain way and suburban areas vote a certain way, and that they would want to help transform suburban areas into more urban areas so they would vote more in line and, and hence, you know, that, that we could be all part of a federal COG political program. And I was thinking that the, you as mayor and, and council members could represent the people of Kenmore and to hell with the federal people and all the, all the other people that want to do other things. We have our city here and you are our representatives. You represent us and then, and then we support you and it, and we have a symbiotic deal here. We don't need King County and the state of Washington and the federal government all mixed up in our lives. We can put together a good community just as we are. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Harry Pomeranz and I'm a neighbor of Drew. And Drew just stole my thunder. I was going to comment about the same thing. But I think, I think he is, I think he is right that you are acting in response not to local needs but to HUD directives, specifically the affirmative furthering Fair Housing Rule Guidebook, which is not, which really has nothing to do with fair housing but has got to do more with votes, converting suburban conservative votes more into leftist urban votes. And I think you should be responding to your neighbors, the residents who vote for you, not to Washington, DC. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Cara Messias. I live in Kenmore. I grew up in Bothell. This is home. This has been home. First, I want to clarify, I am pro-urban density. I'm not adverse to a missing middle concept. I'm not adverse to a missing middle concept in a walkable neighborhood that creates flexibility in housing types in downtown corridors and neighborhoods. What city council is proposing here is not that. The impact to rezone over half of our current neighborhoods, some with very limited public transportation, retail, and amenities could potentially change the face of Kenmore and quite drastically. Such a decision that affects more than half of your 24,000 constituents should have more substantial community input. Let the community make the final decision. You need community buy-in here. And looking at it tonight, you do not have that. There are many of us that live in Kenmore, and I'm going to take a, a page from Rob's book here. This will sound very radical. We like our cul-de-sacs. We like our suburbs. We like no cars parked on the street. We like our lots. We like our lawns. That's why we live here. This area, this city, is where we choose to live. It's where we choose to love. If we wanted neighborhoods with rows of duplexes and triplexes, we would live in Ballard. I believe city council should put this decision on a ballot vote. If you cannot garner support from 12,000 of your constituents, you don't have your support. And then what are we doing here? Thank you.
Hello. My name is Peter Lance. I live in Kenmore, lifelong resident of Kenmore and Bothell. I was very impressed last week with the Opticus Design Presentation. I thought it was very well done. I don't think the, the city of Kenmore is currently adopting it as thoughtfully as she presented her, made her presentation. She said several things about timing, bringing things together all at the same time, the same place, and being ready. I don't think the whole of the city of Kenmore is ready. I think there are many areas that are not ready to be densified. And I would suggest that the city of Kenmore actually look for small areas with very aged houses that are due for the bulldozer because every, almost every example she had, a bulldozer'd come in, razed the commu-- the area, and you had new housing there of a higher density. And she had some very nice ideas. Just turning Kenmore into duplexes and triplexes is not her vision. And I would strongly suggest you find very limited areas, go to work on them and do them right and correctly, and embrace what she did, what she suggested. And that would be fourplexes and fiveplexes. And, but there would be walkable areas where you think you can bring in the, the cafes and the walkability. And you're going to have the transportation. We're a small town. You're not going to have a lot of choices. But to just turn everything into triplexes and duplexes is, is well, not well-received by this area and I think it, by the public here tonight. But I don't think it's going to work well. And you could have a much better response if you took what she suggested, embraced it, and picked out an area and said, this is where we're going to do it. I don't think you have a, a real housing requirement bind with the Growth Management Act and so on. Looks like by my calculation, you need about 120 houses a year to hit your statutory or your obligations. So I think we're getting way ahead of ourselves turning the whole community into duplexes and triplexes. Let's try to have a decade, decade, decade-type plan to see how the city should develop and focus on something and, and try to do it correctly. You've got areas over in my neighborhood which, if not for 68th and Wanita Way, which you've got a real issue there that we don't know how it's going to be post-COVID. But for years, the council would hear all about the troubles of people trying to cross the slough. That is, that's not going to go away. It's not currently present. And maybe post-COVID, everybody's going to work at home and not drive. But that remains to be seen. I'd actually suggest you stop all the crappy subdivisions south of the slough. They look terrible. People are building tight little houses. This is where the Opticus Design would really do well in what little property is left to start doing that, that sort of thing. But maybe reserve some areas for future growth and see if you can solve the traffic issues that we're going to have south of the slough. It's, just think about maybe some areas should just be reserved. You've still got to hit your numbers of 120 houses a year. I get that. But let's not get ahead of ourselves. We can take some time and still be good stewards with the rest of the statewide community. We don't have to solve everything today. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. My name is David Kirsten. I've been a resident of Kenmore for 35 years. And I really don't have much more to say than what other people have been saying. I don't agree with the missing middle housing proposition that you have as far as rezoning. I think it's a, a major concern for a lot of people. I think it should be put to a vote of the people. You are our representatives. And if you're just making decisions based on your own feelings, I think that is totally wrong. And so I want it to be presented as a vote for the, for the entire public of Kenmore. Thank you very much.
Thank you. James, James Smith, Marion Dre, Holly and, and Dilla, Dennis Carroll, and Nathan Garland.
Hi, my name is James Smith. I've worked in Kenmore since 2005 and I've lived here since 2013. My wife and I started off in Seattle and we moved here in 2013 because we were getting a little bit older and we needed a place that had one level so we didn't have to go up and downstairs. We had a split level. And it was challenging to find a place like that. It was wonderful to encounter it here in Kenmore, a single-family home. The fact that I worked and retired from Inglemore High School meant, meant that I, I met a lot of, and a lot of people here. I like this community. I like it a lot. The presentation that was given to us last week, she showed us lots of pictures of 80, 100-year-old duplexes and triplexes. My sister lives in one, actually, in Buffalo, New York. And it was built in something early 1910, something like that, 100 years old. And when it was built, they were still using horse and buggies and there's an alley behind it. And people used to park their cars back there. They've since turned those into backyards. And so now everybody parks their cars on the street. They're four-story buildings, so they were stacked duplexes. And you could, you could do that back then. There's no place in Kenmore where you can do anything like that. So your plan to not have duplexes like that is terrific. Unfortunately, practically everything about it, it's just inadequate. The fact is that the current zoning, everything's built out. There aren't very many empty lots. So you're going to be forced into having builders tear down houses and put up something new. And the plan, that picture that you provided was terrific, except there isn't going to be a place to put the cars. Several people have already talked about that. You're not really going to be able to control, you have a plan, but you're not really going to be able to control how many of these things are built, when. Now, on the presentation, she talked about the fact that she expected one to two duplexes or triplexes per year. I can't imagine that's even close. That's one contractor. You could easily have 20 trying to build houses here. You could easily have 20 trying to build houses here. So now you have a huge number of duplexes coming into the community, and nobody's ready for it. That's what everybody has told you. They're not. And your idea that it's somehow going to be wonderful is crazy. It's just wrong. The fact that I've had to try to go down to Seattle to work in different places, the streets are lined with cars, there's no place to park your car, go into a medical appointment for 20 minutes, required a 25-minute walk to the clinic so that I could get done and come home. And the idea that our streets lined with cars, it's going to be very much like that. People are not giving up their cars. I would much prefer to see two different, two changes to what you got, you got planned. One, a waiver process, so that instead of rezoning everything, you can ask for a few waivers to the building, so that each one of them, one at a time, the developer comes in and says, "On this site, on this location, this is what I want to build." It's not rezoned. You grant a waiver to the zoning. Oh, yes, and apparently you have to keep track of the deed restrictions. So come up with a waiver so that a builder can come in, and the neighbor can look, neighbors can look at this particular pla, this particular site and say, "Yes, this makes sense for us," and then approve one. If you come up with a limit for a few per year, then her goal of one to two per year, you can easily achieve, and then everybody in the community can look at it and not recognize the fact that you're destroying Kenmore, because that's certainly what it sounds like. The other area I'd like you to look at is the, the commercial zone doesn't really have any housing in it. If you've looked at other places around Seattle, there's lots of that going in, where the ground floor has commercial properties and the upper floors have residential properties. I can't think of any reason why you can't do that. And if you did that right over here, it wouldn't affect my neighborhood, which is what I'm really sort of interested in, but it would provide housing for an awful lot of people. That seems like that's a good idea, much better than this current proposal. Thank you very much.
Your Honor and City Council, my name is Mary Ann Dre, and somehow I got to be a senior citizen while living in Kenmore. And I totally agree with all the previous speakers, so for the essence of time and everyone's sanity, I'm going to make it short, but as your grandmother, I'm asking for common sense. I am not going to ride an electronic bike in the rain up and down the hills in Kenmore. The presentation last Wednesday was very idealistic and talked about a variety of demographics living in middle housing. I think that's fine, but every picture, except for one with the cottages, showed a lot of stairs. So it's time to go back to the drawing board. Dear City Council, I know you've done a lot of work, but it's time to do more work and listen to your community. I am opposed to this plan. Thank you from Grandma.
My name's Holly Andrella, and I am a resident of Kenmore since 1964. I want to remind you that your job is to represent the people of Kenmore, and I bring that up because I was at a party with Deputy Mayor Melanie McCain at my son's house when she was candidate, okaying, and I asked her, "Why are you running for Kenmore City Council?" And what she told me was, "I was recruited by the Kenmore City Council because they wanted somebody progressive on the council." And as a not-progressive person, I would say I identify more as an independent. I was bothered by that, quite frankly. I did not say that to you at the time, we were at a party, but I was unhappy that that was what our City Council was doing, was recruiting people that had the same goals that they did. And at the time, I was, at the time, I didn't think too much of it, but now I'm wondering. I'm wondering about the agenda of the City Council. I'm wondering if you're actually interested in representing the people of Kenmore, which is actually what your job is, and I'm wondering if this rushed, and it does feel rushed to me, I will admit, I do not attend many City Council meetings, so I felt really blindsided by this. I actually went door-to-door, Melanie lives one block from me, I went door-to-door in our neighborhood. I don't know if you've done that, but I did go to find out what the people in our neighborhood felt. There was not a single person for this idea. Many people didn't know about the idea. So although you've tried to reach out, it has been ineffective. And I am involved in a neighborhood as a trustee for a property that has this mixed housing, and it is a disaster, and as everybody has said, the primary complaint, I would say, is parking, so you'll have a small rambler that somebody like Mary Ann could be in, and it's got two big buildings next to it. It's not a good idea. I hope that what you'll do is take the time to listen to, and I mean, I think that's the one good thing about your plan, is look at all these people in your city that care about their city that have come out to say, "Please don't do this." Take the time to listen to them, rework the idea. I love the idea that you're trying to solve this problem. I just don't think this is the right way. So thank you.
My name is Denny Carroll. I've been here for, in Kenmore, for about 25 years, and I guess I'm going to pile on here a little bit, the missing middle housing issue. A brochure I received recently talked about housing, and it ignores the fact that the City Council is considering a change that would allow duplexes, triplexes throughout Kenmore's R6, Single Family Residential Zoning District, and two issues kind of come to mind. One, it seems that the City Council, did anyone pull the constituency? Oh, is that better? Sorry. Did anyone pull the constituency? The concept works elsewhere, but the scope of zoning in Kenmore poses what seems to be something ambitious. If the City Council, the other thing I'm looking at is if the City Council votes to approve rezoning R6 housing, I would like to see permit language that requires homeowners to provide free parking on the property to be rezoned. This concept would include two parking spaces for each one-bedroom unit and one parking space per bedroom for multi-bedroom units. I pulled some of the residents in my neighborhood, and we all agree, too many multiple dwellings spill parking onto the adjoining streets. These projects turn adjacent neighborhoods into parking lots and cause unnecessary disruption. I see no obligation on behalf of the citizens of Kenmore to accommodate parking for missing middle residents. Consider this: if the owner or contractor is unable to develop housing that includes the addition of a free parking, I suggest denial of the zoning permit. If money for the project ignores free parking element as stated above, I suggest that the city either negotiate free parking back into the grant or give back the money. There are lower-cost, cost housing options north and east of Kenmore. Kenmore shouldn't turn its streets into parking lots for the sake of punching, punching the middle housing option. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And right after Mr. Garland, we'll have Stan Eisenhath, Brent Court, Audrey Gifford, Colleen Anderson, and Jeff A. Daniels.
My name is Nathan Garland. My wife and I moved to Kenmore over a year ago to begin raising a family in one of its many characteristic single-family neighborhoods. Like many who are here tonight and have spoken out the last two City Council sessions, I'm concerned that the City Council's rezoning plan is proceeding too quickly and without the involvement of the communities that would be impacted. About two weeks ago, I learned by word of mouth that the city planned to update R6 zoning to allow duplexes and triplexes. I could not find official details until I discovered the City Council meeting notes, which contain a map showing that R6 zoning was not simply being updated, but eliminated and replaced with RM zoning. The flyer that was sent out after the recent City Council meeting implied an update to R6, not a replacement. This flyer also mentions duplexes and triplexes, which are typically rental units under a single ownership, which would most likely be property developers. However, the Missing Middle Housing Code amendments included in the same meeting notes also allow ownership through condominium arrangements, which is not typical for triplexes and duplexes. Missing from the flyer and the FAQ provided in meeting notes is any mention of the impact to property taxes that would result from increased land values resulting from this rezoning. And in the final Revised Land Use Elements Amendments document, Goal Number One, which previously read, "Enhance Kenmore's quality of life as a place to live, raise children, recreate, workshop, and socialize," it has been edited to eliminate the phrase "raise The more time I spend reading through the details, the more I find that the information that has only recently been released to the citizens of Kenmore is not as transparent as it should be for something that would change the fundamental characteristic of its neighborhoods. And many others agree. An online petition that was started only a few days ago already has over 450 signatures opposing the action at this time. I urge the Council to delay the rezoning initiative until it can appropriately involve the communities that it impacts. Thank you.
My name's Stan Eisenhath, 16328 Inglewood Road, Kenmore. And most of what I was going to say has already been said, so I'll keep it short. First of all, thank you for working through this. It's a tough topic. It's controversial, and I've been on the Planning Commission, but never on the Council, but I do know how stressed, how stressful it is to take topics that affect everybody in a different way. I will say, though, the, my point here is, I don't believe that you'll meet your objectives the way it's being done. It's going to get done somehow in time, but how you do it, how we do it, I want to use the word "we," how we do this is imperative. First of all, I think something of this scale really needs to be a vote of the people. I think it needs to be a referendum. You've tried very hard to communicate to the community, but during, you know, going uphill against COVID, it's hard to do that. But I do think that it needs to be, and I share this with our neighbors who talk about the same thing. Why don't we bring it to a vote? Why don't we get more involved? Sometimes a vote causes people to get more involved, is it not? Bear with me. The other thing, when these are developed, whether it be, however it happens, the question comes to mind, and I'm in the real estate business too, so I understand housing, best and highest and best use of land. How are they going to be controlled? Is there an HOA? Is there any kind of standards that are going to be made? Or is there a height restriction? Those things are, a question is, well, what happens? Are they just bedang, bedang? Does it, depends what the architect wants for that property? How is that going to be regulated? And I haven't seen anything that has, and addresses anything about the, the architectural aspect or the control of it. Also, I look around Kenmore. By the way, I've been riding my bike here since I was, it was in the 50s. So we moved back here in about 45 years ago, so we've been here a long time. And I look at the development that's gone on, and I don't see many condominiums. So all this housing is talking about affordable housing, much of it. Affordable housing, I would think, would be, when looking at all of that, people want to buy something. And I can see developers wanting to buy apartments, and I see the zoning for apartments, so I don't see, it used to be they were building condos left and right. There were reasons they shifted to apartments. But I see more apartments than I see condominiums. And townhomes and other things, I'm concerned, again, back to the HOA or back to the, how it's going to be laid out. Are these going to be actual units for people to buy and to live in? Because the American dream is to have a home, or to have something that, most of us, and most of us have them worked for them very hard, and I think that that's what you're trying to accomplish. So please listen to the community. We care, and we'd like, we'd like to make sure that we are heard and that we are part of this. So consider it a referendum to the vote. Thank you.
I'm Brent Cortee, resident of Kenmore. Kenmore, to an outsider, is likely an underestimated city. It was to me. It was a place with oil-chain shops and fast-food restaurants and an affordable bowling alley. Maybe a place to get gas. Years ago, when driving over Lake Washington, I knew that when I was passing through Kenmore, I was only halfway home from my commute, passing the 12 o'clock mark on Lake Washington. Little did I know that just one block off that busy street was a small city working to grow and improve. A city where a number of retired people, the majority of whom built homes where they, the homes where they lived, combined with younger families, often the second owners of the homes who were the first to live in Kenmore by the lake before we were even a city. I represent one such family. We bought our home from a woman, a woman named Priscilla Drogi. Priscilla and her husband Leonard built their home in 1956, among the first in the neighborhood of Uplake. If you've driven by our home and walked by our home, which many people do in this room, many people do, you've likely seen the gaudy fencepost statue made of brick and topped with a stone head, and the face, moss, unibrow, and all. I had the good fortune of meeting Priscilla and her two daughters. Many in this room have met her as well. She worked at a local bank. She raised her girls and was deeply involved in the PTA, neighborhood groups, the Aqua Club, and in her later years, the Kenmore Historical Society, and the North Shore Senior Center, where I served on the board for seven years. She was a significant part of our community for 60 years. Priscilla Drogi was not only a significant part of the history of Kenmore, she literally wrote the history book about Kenmore titled, "Kenmore by the Lake: A Community History." In the nearly eight years since my family and I moved to Seattle, we have been remodeling and updating the Drogi House, and in doing so, we've taken artifacts from the home and included them throughout its current design. Now, I share this for a few reasons. The first is to point out that history matters, perhaps more to a small city than to a big one. The second is to acknowledge that I myself and my family represent part of the change that is happening to Kenmore, and as such, we would embrace continuing change and modernization. This modernization needs to be well-thought of, and first and foremost, must honor the unique aspects of our community that make Kenmore, Kenmore. My fear, to be blunt, is that while our good intentions of addressing the missing middle are well-founded, we are ourselves missing the most important points, that we are not seeking to live in a big city, nor to be subservient to one by virtue of rushing to change zoning and construction regulations that would change the very heart of why most of us moved here in the first place. That would change the soul of Kenmore by the lake. That would make us a little more like the place that many of us fled from, and then unfortunately, may not solve the problem we're trying to solve. Now, cities change. The 1918 craftsman we left in Wallingford is now surrounded by multifamily housing, crowded sidewalks devoid of architectural balance, and parking is nearly impossible. It is the Disney movie Up, for lack of a better metaphor. Now, is this version of Kenmore by the lake that, that we may be headed to, the city that we moved to, the city where you want to raise your children, that where many of us are raising our children, perhaps one day, I will be able to say that in 60 years, I spent, I'm sorry, I spent 60 years building the community like Priscilla Drogi did, and like many of the people in this room have done, many of the people are doing presently. But will it be at the expense of the very magic and the unique archetype that Kenmore is? City Council members, for those of you who are on the fence, please take a moment and ask yourselves why you live here. Please take a moment and ask yourself why you don't live closer to the big city. When you see your neighbor, your child's teacher, your barista, whoever at the grocery store, does that matter to you? And respectfully, remember that the history of Kenmore is largely what makes us so unique. I appreciate the time that each of you invest in protecting our city, and the act of protecting it while building the future is perhaps your greatest charge. it while building the future is perhaps your greatest charge. I don’t envy your task. I appreciate your consideration. Thanks.
Good evening, Kenmore City Council, mayor, and fellow residents of Kenmore. My name is Colleen Anderson, and I’ve lived in Kenmore since 2006. We moved here from Shoreline to move to a, you know, a single-family home to raise our children. I’m here tonight to let you know that I and most of all the people that I’ve spoken with about this over the last two weeks in Kenmore do not want to move forward with this blanket zoning changes from R6 to RM. I understand the problem you are trying to solve with these changes, but based on my research, I don’t believe they will in fact solve the problem. I ask that the council do the following before voting. Define what Kenmore’s role should be in missing middle. Define all the known impacts this type of zoning would have. We know it will have impacts to traffic, congestion, the environment, increased traffic—I’ve repeated that—schools will need to grow, and new ones most likely would need to be built, including all the infrastructure to handle the additional residents. We are currently lacking in the infrastructure to handle our current residents. We do not have a great downtown core, and someone else mentioned earlier about what Woodenville has done, about what Bothell has done, and we could probably take some notes from doing some of that, which would provide both the missing middle and affordable housing. I would like to see an environmental study impact. Tearing down existing single-family homes would add to pollution. That just gets raised, it gets put into the environment, and it has its own environmental impact. I would like to see the transit corridor be evaluated. Currently, we have issues with it now. It takes hours to get to work, so I don’t see how adding more residents is going to end with our current transit, and I know they’re improving it, but I just don’t see how that’s going to solve any problems. I’d like to see the outline of what your plans are to mitigate all of those impacts that I’ve mentioned, plus additional ones that would come out of impact studies. Define how Kenmore will pay to address some of these impacts. Is that going to be taxes? Will that be from the developers? How are we going to afford this? And I think we should, as some people have mentioned, allow the residents of Kenmore to vote on this. And lastly, I’d like you to define your measure of success. What is success for the missing middle? I don’t see that in the flyers. I see a lot of “this is what it is,” but I don’t see how you’re going to measure the success. And I understand that you’ve sent a lot of flyers, but I still talked to many people in my community who had no idea that this was coming and that it would impact zoning. None of the flyers, except for one, had a quarter-mile impact for zoning. I never saw another flyer to say, “We’re doing a blanket zoning.” Doesn’t mean you didn’t send it, but I didn’t see it. In listening to the meeting from a few weeks back, it did seem that there was a lot of pressure around a specific project and some grant money, which forced you not to allow there to be additional time for your vote. That was very upsetting to have—that you didn’t want to listen to the community or give enough time, that these projects were that important when they could have been carved out, in my opinion. I know a lot of people have spoke and have presented a lot of other opinions that I have about this, so I appreciate your attention, and I really, really ask you to vote no and extend it and look for a solution to the missing middle and affordable housing that doesn’t impact all of the R6 single-family housing. Thank you.
My name is Jeff Daniels, and I really am pleased to have a chance to talk with you about this initiative. So I live in the Uplake neighborhood in Kenmore, and I bought a house there in 1994. And the last three years, I have hired an architect, a builder, and rebuilt that house. So I’ve reinvested into the neighborhood. And in that experience, I initially started with, you know, a dream budget of half a million, and I can tell you right now that there is no way you’re going to build a duplex or a triplex under $750 to $1 million. And if you don’t believe me, just take the model, price it out, the contractors, look at the materials. This doesn’t have a chance of hitting the target that you’re aiming at. This will come in much higher, and the people who can afford it are not the market that you’re aiming at. So I would price it out in today’s market. Last year was insane. Literally, the cost of materials last year was insane, and this year it’s worse. So trying to pick out things that haven’t been said. So during that process, I moved to Ballard and bought a townhouse like three or four years ago, and I literally watched—and Ballard is—from a community planning point of view—is pretty commendable. They’ve done a lot of things right. But over, you know, three years, I’ve been watching, you know, yards disappear and trees disappear and houses with character disappear and townhouses going up and, you know, the character of the place. You know, after three years, I don’t want to live there. I’m glad to get out of there, right? And I really don’t hear the cost, like building houses between other houses, there is a cost to that. And then, from what I’ve heard from so far, I haven’t heard, you know, the negatives or the costs of doing that. The other thing is, I moved to Ballard because I wanted that kind of community experience that was represented in the presentation last week. But the reality was that, you know, initially, it was nice, but there are downsides to having these community areas where I did not feel safe walking around, right? You know, there are a lot of costs that come along with this community-type approach. So, you know, here, I walk to Starbucks. I love it. It’s beautiful. You know, it’s naturally beautiful. And in Ballard, same distance, I don’t enjoy it, don’t feel safe. And it really comes down to developers, right? Developers who are overtaking, people who live there, bidding them out, right? That’s really the issue, the profits from developers, right? So I think despite great intentions, what is most likely to happen if you do go forward with this is it’s going to come down to people who really don’t want this versus developers who don’t live here and their profits. And that’s going to be the war. So—and it’s happened in Ballard. Don’t have it happen here. So my request is definitely a vote. If you don’t put it to a vote, you’re starting a war. Don’t start a war.
And if we could have Melissa Pendleton, Shamara Estrada, Sean, I think your penmanship is throwing me off, Rep. Plogle, John King, Peter O’Fell.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Andre Gifford. I live in the Uplake neighborhood. I’m late to this whole party. When the slides were put up at the beginning of the meeting, talking about the communication and the way the communication was sent out to the community, I believe you, but I think I’m not alone. The first I knew about this going on was when I got the mailer in my mailbox, which was late in the evening on last Tuesday, and there was a council meeting here on Wednesday, and I was here for that, but it wasn’t even on the agenda yet. So I appreciate that the city and the council has made efforts to communicate this as broadly as possible, but at least certainly in my case, and I believe I’m not alone, it didn’t work. And so even people within my neighborhood, which is the Uplake neighborhood, people were completely and totally and absolutely unaware of this whole initiative and what’s going through. And then to have this accelerated timeline where there’s one event for public discussion on this, and then I believe it’s on the 10th, you’re looking to make the decision? That astonishes me. I feel like this is a great example of the road to hell is paved with good intentions. And so I believe absolutely that each and every one of you wants the best thing for the city of Kenmore, and I understand there’s an issue with the price of housing, not just in Kenmore, but in the greater Seattle area, in fact, the whole state of Washington. However, I’ll say this, is that if you live within blocks of Lake Washington, it’s never going to be cheap. It is always going to be expensive, for many of the reasons that have been discussed here already tonight. I just don’t really see how this accomplishes the end goal. In fact, in many ways, I can see it doing just the opposite. In my neighborhood in Uplake, since I’ve been there—which has only been about five years—but I did grow up in Lake Forest Park, and when I moved to Kenmore, in many respects, I felt like I was moving home, you know? And within the Uplake neighborhood, just recently, there’ve been several property homes, several properties that have sold to younger couples. Now, they weren’t inexpensive properties, but they were still affordable. I don’t see those homes, starter homes, that sold recently as being any more expensive than what these options are here that you’re looking to build. I love my neighborhood. The reason I moved to that neighborhood was specifically because it’s already a walkable neighborhood, and it’s nice, it’s clean, the yards look great, people care, and there’s this wonderful sense of community. As soon as cars are parked up and down the street—which right now doesn’t exist, everybody’s able to put their cars away—suddenly, that neighborhood is no longer walkable, and there is no space for sidewalks and curbs and everything else, and for the people to safely walk up and down the streets and do the birdwatching, which they love to do. And so I really question the value that this gives. And furthermore, I would absolutely state, given the feelings that have been expressed already tonight surrounding that this needs to go to a vote, I don’t believe that any of you should be empowered—and I mean this sincerely—to be able to make a decision that impacts as many of the residents in the city as this does on such short notice. I look at the number on your screen over there with 58 people in attendance, and I look at the number of people that are here tonight. I would wager that still, almost nobody knows about this. I was alarmed by this, obviously, and so I went to neighborhood.com, I looked at the Kenmore webpage, and there are people there that are in favor of this initiative. But guess what? Except for perhaps one exception, they don’t live here. These are people—from Lake Forest Park—and don’t get me wrong, I’m from Lake Forest Park—but this failed there. They decided as a community that they did not want to have this density. And so they came over with other means to be able to satisfy the plan. My assumption is, when there’s something like this, that some sort of federal funding or state funding or something you want to be able to obtain. But clearly, I believe the residents of the city of Kenmore just don’t want this, just like it was not wanted within Lake Forest Park. So please, don’t make a decision on this. I urge you, please, to put this toward a vote, and then we’ll know. Even though I would still disagree with it if there were a vote.
Thank you. I’m sorry. We do need to move on. Your time is up.
I would be able to accept it. Thank you for your time.
Hi, I’m Melissa Pendleton. I live in Kenmore. While I’m for affordable housing and a very progressive person, this approach is very misguided. Nothing in this actually helps home pricing, and you’ve done nothing to notify people properly, except send marketing materials and drawings. Not one zoning map has actually been sent to neighborhoods, and people are very unaware of what’s happening. In just a few short days, I helped compile over 250 wet signatures and 460 online signatures of people who are deeply opposed to this approach. Of the wet signatures I helped compile, I did not find one household aware of exactly what was being presented or for it. They didn’t understand the point of the flyer you sent. They thought it was a marketing about some development. People were extremely confused, and when they did see the zoning map, didn’t understand how it was even in the council’s power to change almost all of Kenmore and the makeup of Kenmore without proper notification. Missing middle. We are the middle. These neighbors, my neighbors, our preschool teachers, school nurses, firefighters, daycare workers, new families, and I work at a construction company. We are the middle you speak of. In Kenmore, I’m proud. We have condos, townhomes, apartments, and single-family homes. All are welcome. But per the RCW 3670A, the Growth Management Act, it clearly states, “A plan must be submitted that ensures the vitality and character of established neighborhoods,” but you only chose to talk about the part that talks about townhomes. This complete rezoning isn’t careful planning to make affordable housing. It’s an abuse of power that’s in contradiction to the land use elements for the Growth Management Act, an abuse of power that doesn’t help anyone but developers. I’ve heard people throw around the research, “Well, there’s just as much research showing that developing existing neighborhoods is not what helps housing.” But you’ve been an echo chamber, convincing yourself what a great idea this is, and the community gets nothing but a few minutes each to try to state an opinion. Look at other areas. My sister lives in Ballard. Land is now extremely expensive because developers with deep pockets beat out families for houses and charge just as much with two or three stacked together, creating unsafe parking nightmare that has driven families away. You say it won’t happen here quickly, but one day in Ballard, it did. I went to see my sister two weeks ago, and two entire city blocks are razed to the ground of nice, small starter homes. Many new families of the signatures I collected, I talked to. They specifically stated that they had to move away from areas like this for their mental health. The congestion, density, and unsafe conditions are affecting their mental health, families, and giving them deep anxiety. They had to leave. They came to Kenmore. The zoning proposed is misguiding, claiming to help the middle, us, that will affect people’s mental health. And I know this is something you care about because you signed a referendum two meetings ago, the last meeting I was at, about mental health. Also, in your flyer, you mentioned the Sierra Club. Did you know only half the Sierra Club endorses this? The other half was disgusted, saying that careful planning and retention of old growth trees was much more important than stacking people together. I know you’ve tried to say that trees won’t go away, but at last meeting, I specifically heard them say, “Well, if it’s in the way, they would. So what? The old growth trees go, and small staplings that die the next year get put in its place.” I voted for each of you sitting here, each of you. You may have your own thoughts about this, but you are elected to be the voice of the people. You are not doing that by passing this. You’re abusing your position and taking advantage of very busy families that are working hard, long hours, and caring for the kids, and don’t have the endless hours to look up their own zoning maps in ten meetings. I urge you not to pass this.
I’m Shamara Estrada, and I live in Kenmore. I lived here for 10 years. I feel like many of the points I would make have been expressed and very well. I hope you guys are hearing it. I’m really here to say that I oppose the plan, and I hope you hear my voice because I’m against it. Thank you.
My name is John King. I was here just a few days ago. I’ve been in this council chambers. This will be the third time in a week. Can you hear me now? This is the third time being in the council presence in the last week. It’s good to see you all again, and I’ve come to say the same stuff again. Got your flyer? I’ve now had it in my possession for eight days. Just everybody knows that. Sorry for speaking to the people behind me. Also, went online to look at Attachment 6. Attachment 6 by marine engineering is 70% of the landmass of Kenmore will be swiped away by the power of the pen. The power of the pen is strong. So is the vote of the people. You know, haste makes waste. I teach my kids that. Haste makes waste. I like to repeat that. Haste makes waste. We’re hastily changing the zoning of Kenmore. We’re not using it properly. Taking time, like we’ve talked about, across the street, taking time to look at property. I looked up a couple people. I looked up a couple pieces of property. If you, in Bothell, want to build a duplex and sell it, you sell it for $800,000. That's not middle, that's not missing middle. What you want is a piece of property that's worth about $250,000 for the starter home. I met a guy here, civil engineer, last week. He was looking for a middle housing. He needs $250,000. That's a two-bedroom condo, just like a lot of us have been speaking about. Build a five-over-one multiple times similar like Bothell is doing in its core, and we shall fix the middle housing problem. And there was an interesting note that someone said, "We're looking to get 120 houses per year." We build up a long-term plan, building the five-over-ones, building core, building our businesses. I've read your big stack of paper here twice now. I do not see where you're getting businesses here to, for us to live and work in. I do not see it. Also, I'm a big proponent of, how do you pay for things? My job requires me to ask, "How are you going to pay for it?" If you're not going to be able to pay for it, we're not doing it. People don't like to hear that. How are we going to pay for it? I don't see how we're paying for this. If a contractor wants to come in and build a duplex, they're going to tap into that. Corporations stop to get their water, they're going to tap into the sewer existing. They're not going to fix downstream. They don't care. My infrastructure in the community of where I live, ah, it's going on over 70 years old. It's not, it's, it needs to be fixed. And are we going to charge the contractors to do that? Um, in short, I just say, please, vote this down. Bring in the people to talk over it. This is, uh, this is a nationwide problem we have, and you guys have worked and strong on this for a year now. I understand that. I empathize with you for the long time that you spent talking about this, but do it in a logical, slow manner. Do it in years. Come up with a management strategy more than just a power of a pen swiping 70% of Kenmore. That's unjust. That's disrespectful. Like, other people are saying that's a vote of the people. I, I just don't think it's right. So, in short, please vote it down and help bring us people to the table to help solve the problem. We will bring them. There's lots of people in this room right now that are in the profession of land planning. We've heard lawyers. I know people that do CIPA. I know people that are civil engineers. I know that are builders. There's many of us here that have strong knowledge in this area. Please consider what we can bring to the table to help Kenmore be successful, and we'll be proud of Kenmore as citizens. Thank you.
And as we wait for Peter to begin, Andrew Stevenson, Wayne Foo, Michael Fordman, or Friedman, and Roger Anderson, you're welcome to approach the podium.
Hi, Peter Ottley, resident at Kenmore. I think we can all tell, there's obviously a disconnect between this plan and the city. The people haven't been listened to. I think you can tell. It, it's a terrible idea. I mean, I'm in real estate, I know this subject very well. Everybody here knows that, how do we plan a city? We have a city center. There's density in the center. The density supports the businesses. That's how zoning is set up. That's how it's set up in the city of Seattle. There's urban centers, there's urban villages. The density is not set up in the single-family zones. I don't know, it, I know the city of Minneapolis enacted this. Seattle hasn't done it. LA hasn't done it. I mean, this is a small city we're talking about. Why, why are we trying to lead the charge in the country on this? This is a radical change. You're changing all single, basically all single-family housing in Kenmore. And that's not for you guys to do on a rush. Everything that you've presented, it's inaccurate. These flyers that you send, they don't say, "Hey, your neighborhood has changed." In Seattle, it would have gone from SF to LR1. We don't want LR1, LR2, LR3. We don't want duplexes, triplexes. The, the drawings are actually incorrect up there. They're not even, it's not even how you build townhomes now. That's how you did it at the turn of the century. They're individual, townhome is owned ground to sky. What you're presenting isn't, look at how all of them are done. It's a single roof. So, your information is incorrect. There's unintended consequences, too. The King County appraisal, when they do real estate taxes, if you're on a property that could now become five residences, your taxes could go up from $3,000 a year to $8,000 a year. And do you, are you, are you trying to impose that on the, because you're hastily doing this? You're going to price out some of the lower? It could be if it's a larger lot and you could fit 10 residences on, all of a sudden, the property taxes could skyrocket. And this happens. It happens all over. I, I, I don't know, you, you're, you're hearing from all these families that are frustrated. This is just terrible land use. There's no cities that have this. Look at what we're doing. You're doing some great stuff here. We have apartments. We have townhomes going in. Where are they near? Bus routes. We don't have sidewalks. So I might, when I walk down the hill, when there's cars parked, I have to walk into the street. I mean, let's build out sidewalks. Let's build out walking paths. Let's come up with a plan. So areas where this is successful tend to have alleyways. Alleyways offer a space for trash. So now you're gonna, now you're gonna add four red, four townhomes? And your drawings aren't correct on how a townhome's built, because you don't have a common roof. It's individual roofs. And there's legal reasons behind that. But now, have you seen the trash service? When, if, if you were to add 12 more units on a block? It takes up the whole block of the trash. So the cities have alleyways where this is going. The cities have alleyways where the cars have access to access units off the back. I don't even think the people know how this stuff is done that is proposing this. I mean, you, you've listened to 40 people telling you, I, I've talked to a dozen different people in the neighborhood. They all think it's a terrible idea. There's a disconnect here. I mean, I could go on and on and on about all the bad ideas. We have good stuff. We have transit coming. Let's build density near transit. Let's build it where people can walk to grocery stores. Let's build it where it makes sense. If we want to do affordable housing, set up an MFT program like the city of Seattle, like the city of Bellevue, like the city of Kirkland. That is for affordable housing. Then it's working with King County. King County is sharing in the taxes. We don't even know that up there that we have storm sewer adequate. I mean, did you see the billions of dollars it costs to build out the storms, the sewer system? I mean, these are, these are massive things. If they're undersized, you gotta rebuild them. The sewer, the storm, the schools? I mean, how many portables? We got a lot of parents out here. How many portables are at Kenmore Elementary, at Lockwood Elementary? Why do we have portables there? Because the schools aren't big enough? We all know this. If, if you have kids, you know this. And so now you're talking about taking, you know, two homes and putting in eight? So, I don't, I, it, it's, it's a terrible idea. It hasn't been communicated well. It's not missing in the middle. It's not about affordable housing. It's, it's, I, I, I can't even explain how you came up with it, but it needs to be scrapped.
There's been a request from council for a quick recess. I think it's been a couple of hours, and I think people need to stretch their legs. We're going to take a five-minute recess. We'll be back at 9:05. Kenmore City Council will come back to order. Madam Clerk, who is next for the public hearing?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Okay, let's resume our public comment. We want to hear from you. Andrew Stevenson, Wayne Foo, Michael Fordman, Roger Anderson.
Hey, folks, if you're going to have conversations, if you could please just take it out to lobby so we can hear our public comment, I'd appreciate it.
Hi, um, my name's Andrew Stevenson. I'm from Kenmore as well. I went to Englewood High School. And I'm a founder and president of a small business here in Kenmore. Um, I'm also a civil engineer. That's my career. And I'm 29 years old. I'm a civil engineer. Oh, I said that. I'm a little nervous. And unfortunately, you know, my, um, my population hasn't been heard tonight. I've heard a lot of "I was here first" responses here today from a very organized and worked-up, uh, community here of people who have come here. And, um, there's a lot of people who have shared, shared my opinions as well. And, um, they're not here tonight, and that's unfortunate. I, the, the demographics that I expected at a public hearing were confirmed. And I may be the youngest person here. But I grew up in a detached home in rural US, on an island. I grew up in a duplex, as well in Japan. I grew up in, also in an apartment tower in England. I've lived in eight countries on five different continents, and I've seen different kinds of communities all over the world. And, um, I loved those experiences, growing up in middle housing. I had great memories with my friends. They lived right across the street. And I miss those memories. I miss those times. And I was really actually disappointed when I moved here. I was 14 years old, coming from Japan, where I could walk everywhere. I could walk to the corner store down the street. Um, there were many kids that lived around us because we were all in middle housing. And then I moved here to rural Kenmore with a detached home in the cul-de-sac street. And it, it was really depressing, actually. I had a bigger yard at my, uh, middle housing in Japan than I do here. Uh, they're just really big homes. Um, we're really far away from everything. Uh, it's, it's improving now. The bus to 25 is better. I actually owned a car for 10 years, and I just sold my car this year in Kenmore. And, um, I want to tell you that some of the older generation will say that getting rid of your car is not possible, not feasible, but it is. I waited until much later in my life, and now I've got rid of my car. And it's been an amazing liberty that I love. And I'm looking, I'm really glad that Kenmore is headed in this direction. And, um, I've actually been having to look at housing outside of Kenmore. I would like to stay here because my parents are here. My friends are here. And I'd like to be able to support them as they age and retire. And I can't find anything here that is appropriate, that I can buy, and that isn't a condo. I'd rather could do a duplex or some of these middle housing ideas. And, and so, um, I would really, really like you to consider this, um, moving forward. I know this won't make you popular for some of the people who bought houses many decades ago. But please think about those that are graduating and that have grown up here in Kenmore and would like to stay sticking around their hometown, either for their family or friends or just the community that they grew up in. and so I really, I'd also like to add as well that you helped break the cycle, because what I'm seeing here is a continuation of the problem, which is, you know, again, I was here first, and, um, it's kind of looks like a closed community. And I really, really like to see that, um, you think about where, you know, this community is headed and know that, um, you know, if people are unpopular right now, that in the future, there'll be people that move in here who can find affordable housing, that'll be grateful that you did that, and they'll know who you were. So anyways, um, it looks like the timer failed, but, um, I think that's all I can say right now. And thanks so much for your time.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and start the timer in the background. Go on.
Mayor, council, good evening.
Mayor, Council, good evening. Wayne Foo, Kenmore citizen. I'm a big fan of compact living. I lived in Kenmore for 32 years. I lived in three houses, one apartment, rent at office, or in Kenmore. I moved three times. I tore down my old moldy, leaking house. I shop around. Before that, I shop around for an affordable house for my family, which is six plus frequently visiting... Plus frequently visiting parents, kids, grandpa, grandma. So I need a house to accommodate eight. But any house just show me a way. So I wanted to build a house that's a lower price than the low-income family house. So that said, I am a walk-the-top person, I consider. I like compact living, and I like Kenmore. And I couldn't walk away from Kenmore but to tear down and build because one of my kids had selective mutism, and the school had been very supportive to her. She's talking now, okay. I want to talk a little bit about the infill triplex. And this type of infill particularly proposed by the council would involve tear down. So I'm gonna talk about this a little bit. The infill triplex would not be more attainable than existing single-family house. The new housing construction involved tear down on a small site is three times the price of the existing house per square foot. All these factors... I'm sorry, skip that. It makes it impossible to build an attainable housing unit because I cross out a lot of it. A new smaller house on the new RM zone may cost slightly under a million dollars, but it may increase to over a million dollars in one or two years in Kenmore. Tear down a livable house to build missing middle house for profit from real estate is not fighting climate change. According to many studies, tear down and construction contribute 25% of waste in the United States. The waste of tear down prematurely would cancel decades of effort on carbon reduction of a house user. Replacement construction often create steeper grade around edge of the tear down property that caused the flood of the nearby parcels. The sharp increased impervious surface also overwhelmed the existing stormwater system. Next, I have a comment about all these three examples. And there's a more elaborate example on this page. Shows the scheme divide one current single-family lot into two legal lot. We call it short plot. And one has a single family on it. Another same-sized lot has a duplex on it and then two-car parking. This scheme could make a current single-family lot slide into four units, not three units. Because if we build a single-family house on one smaller lot, assume it's not 4,100 square foot, assume it's 3,000 square foot.
Thank you, Mr. Foo. I'm sorry, you can't see the timer, but your time is up.
Thank you.
Hi, Michael Friedman. I live in Kenmore. In fact, I live across the street at the Spencer 68. I've lived here about six years. My wife and I moved here from Texas. And we love living here. It's very walkable in this area. We can get a lot of things done. I can shop, do all the things I like to do, and it's super useful to live here. I work out of my house, and I just keep going every day. In May this past year, the Spencer 68 tried to raise our rent by 500 bucks a month. That's about 16%. And so we've been looking for places to live. And coming from Texas, the last 20 years, we lived in either duplexes, quadplexes, or apartments. And I think there is absolutely a need for a middle that is missing right now. Those were houses that we grew up in, we lived in, that let us get through not having to own a house, which is not something we ever wanted to do in Texas. Here is the first place I've wanted to live, in a house. But unfortunately, maybe the wages in Texas are lower, but the people saying affordable housing is not very affordable for us. So even looking at the half the price of the statistic that was put up earlier, say $650,000 is outside of our range. And looking at the mortgage rate today, if I looked it up earlier today, 30-year average is 7.5%. So looking for a house is not actually easily attainable either. So I'm stuck in an apartment complex that is trying to overcharge me. By the way, thank you for the ordinance that let them not raise the rent that much. We were able to talk them down to 250 because they didn't give us enough notice. So thank you. First time local government has helped me a whole lot here. It was here, not Texas. So I think that there's a strong need for this. We look forward to having a place that is like a duplex I can share in a small community. In the places that I have lived, like I said, for the exact last 20, 25 years or so, there has been no problems with parking. There's been good communities. There's been smaller arrangements of people and places. I'm not saying it's gonna be easy to do, and I'm not really sure about the method yet. I mean, I don't have that much knowledge of how it's being done. But I think there's a problem, and I'd like to see that because like the gentleman two before me, we're not gonna be able to live here. When we started looking for apartments, when the cost went up from the apartment complex, we couldn't find a place in Kenmore that was in a reasonable budget. I mean, the amount of rent they're asking us to pay was close to 3,000 a month. So, I mean, yeah, there's a lot of people that have houses. I've heard almost everyone say, "I have a house. I have a single-family home." They probably got their mortgage rate at less than 2%. I don't know. I don't think that it's as easy for me and other people. So I'm definitely a different voice than what you've heard tonight. Maybe I'm no one, but I'm not everyone. So when people are saying everyone doesn't want this, it's not entirely true. I don't know if I want it in this specific way, but that's a little too big for me. I think that's all I've got. Thank you.
Roger Anderson, Richard Romals, David Orven, Wardorven, Marcia Fish, and Maureen Kerber. Again, Roger Anderson, Richard Romals, David Orven, Marcia Fish, and Maureen Kerber. Okay. Oh, is that Mr. Dorian? Okay, David Dorian, go on.
That's my handwriting, I'm sorry. Counsel, thank you very much for having us all here tonight. Very glad to be here, and I want to thank you for your time and attention to this issue. It's clearly a very difficult issue. Change is always gonna be difficult for any community. And as we heard in the presentation, to a certain extent, we're gonna be forced into some change. There are some regional requirements that we're gonna have to meet. And it's not just gonna be met by the apartment homes down the block there. And other places have looked into this. So for example, Snohomish County, where Nate Naring, a Republican, pushed through missing middle housing with very similar messaging as we're hearing right now. And I think the challenge that I found is that I'm from a different part of Kenmore, not as the last speaker coming from an apartment home, but living in northeast Kenmore, where we see developers have no problem bulldozing homes right now. They'll come in and bulldoze homes and put in a bunch of single-family homes, no problem. Seen that all around the block that I've got. And I think we're just seeing different parts of Kenmore experience different things here. And that will come. There are some neighborhoods that maybe they're not quite at that range, where they have the really older houses at the end of life quite yet. But in a few years' time, they're gonna be in the same situation as we are in northeast Kenmore, where the bulldozers are coming in. Developers are building those single-family homes. Has the same sort of impact as people are worried about here in Uplake. But I think Uplake would have even potentially been covered by the statewide law that was gonna change within a quarter mile of the transit zone. And that was what you originally heard from your planning commission as well, which does have citizens sitting on that planning commission and giving you advice as well. So I do think the idea that there's some sort of progressive agenda definitely doesn't chive with me, especially because in a neighboring county, we have a Republican who pushed this through with very similar messaging. And because it's at state level and almost made it through Olympia this time as well. So I wish we as a community could leave that out of this and just acknowledge that change is very difficult, but I think we want to be intentional about change. And I like what you have done in terms of spreading this out across all of R6 so that it doesn't disproportionately impact neighborhoods like Uplake, whereas otherwise, within a quarter mile of transit zone, that would mean that would be the only choice. So that would be the only place where it could happen. So doing it equally across Kenmore, I think, is equitable in this case, and actually helps a lot of the people here tonight who are arguing against it. Because when this comes back through Olympia, if local city councils are not taking action, then it would just happen at state level, and we'll have even less control than we do now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dorian. Marcia Fish, Maureen Kerber, are you in the audience? Okay, we will move on. Mr. Patrick O'Brien, John Hendrickson, Lucy Robinson, Elizabeth Mooney, and Cindy Victor.
Pat O'Brien, Kenmore, Washington. So if we have high density in the neighborhoods, and most of us live on hills, there's a cascading effect of more people being at the top of the hill, coming through the neighborhoods one way or another. And by the time you get to the bottom of the hill, you gotta get onto 522, and I guarantee you, it's a mess, or want to eat a drive. So cascading effect from the neighborhood through the neighborhoods onto the arterials. That's what's wrong with this. That's the first thing that's wrong with this. The second thing that's wrong with this is that we've got outside contractors building apartments. And if you're really interested in the poor, then you let them buy something so they can take advantage of the market when they sell, and they've got quite a bit of money left. And developing any kind of apartment does not work to solving the problems of the people we've heard here that can't afford a house. You have to get them into something they own, not a corporation where Amazon, Microsoft, or any other company is paying a $5,000 a month rent to keep their techie person in Kenmore, catch a bus, and go to Bellevue or Seattle. That's not what we're about. We're about making sure the missing middle, if you will, has an opportunity to buy something. And you guys totally haven't thought of that. So the next thing that is really weird is that we've already got zoning in the transit corridors, and we have no build-out yet. There's plenty of places, the Kenmore Village and all up and down the strip, we've already committed to sound transit, that the first two blocks on either side of 522 and the rapid transit would be built out with high density. And you've made efforts to do that. And what that does is it doesn't create the missing middle and the cascading effect from the neighborhoods at the top of the hill down to the bottom. But you have made the mistake of enabling Snohomish County to have us pay for widening 61st so that across where Fruen Hall is, 500 and some houses, rather than go on 228th, go over the hill and connect to the rail and other parking opportunities in Snohomish. They built condos there to block that, and 228th should have stayed in Snohomish. And we don't have any responsibility to pay for their widening of our streets, 61st, so that they can bring 500 new households down through Kenmore and attach them to 522. I think we made a real... We made a big mistake there not having Snohomish County pay for all that. Four, this was not an effort by the citizens of Kenmore. This came from staff. This came from the state. This came from the county. There is no initiative by the public that lives here for this to even occur. And if you were gonna make it occur, wouldn't you make it occur in 10 or 20 years after you've already expunged all the zoning that you have made for high density and have not yet built into? Of course you would. Why would the neighborhoods be the first thing on the chopping block? That's absolutely ridiculous. Ah, what else annoys me? Yeah. Own versus... Oh, there's no concurrency. Several people have said the sewers, streets, sidewalks, schools, fire. There is no concurrency. You're putting horses in a barn, and you don't have all the necessities there to do this zoning. That's ridiculous. It's how many rats can you shove in a shoebox, and what's the outcome for the police and fire? What is it when you increase density to the point where you have three or four times more people living in a confined space? What does that do to their mentality, which I've heard? It isn't pretty. It's Philadelphia, you know? It's New Jersey. We're not New Jersey. I don't aspire to be New Jersey, and I hope the heck you guys don't either. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, John Hendrickson, Kenmore. It's really more like the Middle East. I've traveled around, if you travel out there. The goal from the progressive far-left is to have stacked flats, five stories or higher, everywhere on all of our lots. And go to Egypt and go to Syria, you know, many places, and you can see what it's like to live like that. Is that a good place to raise a family? So the Growth Management Act was supposed to be balanced plan and started in 1990. And the cornerstone was to protect our quality of life. And it promised a balanced approach to growth and with protections about overdevelopment like that you are suggesting here. It included environmental protections. It included an infrastructure requirement before increase in density. And that's public safety. You know, environment is health. The infrastructure is all public safety. And for, they're talking pedestrians, bikes, road standards where it's safe, safe for kids. I mean, you guys in your own comprehensive plan, I don't know who took that out, that this is, you struck out, that one person brought to our attention, that this is no longer a place that's a great place to raise kids. I can't believe any Kenmore citizen on the planning commission came up with that. You know, staff came up with that, maybe under pressure from all the progressives that we have here, even though some of them are living in quite elitist homes. So, you know, when I first got on the council in 2004, I talked about this issue with Debbie Bent. And she told me that, you know, that people are just gonna have to learn that we're gonna change, that we're gonna have this higher density in Kenmore. We changed to R6, and we have a lot of small lots, which apparently, in these really tight neighborhoods that were recently built, we can go to triplex under your plan. You know, and I was like, you know, so there was... This whole process is run by, I think it's a, we're being railroaded, partly by staff, partly by staff that's emboldened by the city council and their utopian views, which they're really just following other people like Sightline Institute and whoever that consultant was you just had on Wednesday. You know, I don't see the real plan. You know, I don't see the real plan. I see following going on. So there's not a lot of integrity in this process. That's why I raised the issue at Citizen Commons with Nigel and his history. But, you know, I'll just say that the Growth Management Act under 3678-010 says you have, you don't want uncoordinated, unplanned growth. It's a threat to health, safety, high quality of life. By the essence of our state. And this is a radical plan with no coordination with neighboring cities or with King County regional policies. 3678.020 encourages preservation of existing house stock. Again, provides for enhancing the state's high quality of life and encouraging citizen participation and ensuring coordination between communities and jurisdictions. You know, you didn't, you did the same thing with the accessory dwelling units a few years ago. The planning commission spent all this time, people can't go to all these planning commission meetings, and then you guys get it in the spring. And then in the summer, before your break in August, you say, oh, we're just going to change the whole thing. And we're going to go all over town, throw everything out the window. You give people less than two weeks to come here and respond and prepare and try to understand. And then less than a month before you vote. So integrity was the main issue. I mentioned Lee Kuan Yew. You know, he was a prime minister of Singapore, and he's credited with taking that country from a third world country to a first world country in one generation. He's respected across the globe in his governance. Xi Jinping, everyone else in China is all following his lead. He passed away a few years ago. One thing he said was, the government in the West has come to be seen as so successful it thinks it can fill all social obligations, as opposed to the less modern societies where such obligations are fulfilled by family. In the East, we start with self-reliance. We start with family. In the West, it's the opposite. The government says, give me a popular mandate.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson.
And I will solve your problems. Well, that's what you're saying, but you're full of baloney. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Lucy Robinson. I'm a Kenmore resident, and I strongly oppose the rezoning. I moved to Kenmore from a duplex in San Francisco a little over two years ago, precisely to avoid high-density living, congestion, parking issues, and raising my kids on a street where I'm too afraid for them to cross the street without holding their hand. As a younger family, we've put everything we have into buying and maintaining our home, and it's by far our biggest asset. And this initiative has the power to destroy everything we love about living in Kenmore. So I hope you hear my voice, and thanks for listening.
Are y'all awake? Thanks for, thanks for being here, and thanks for inviting us all here. I had 20 bullet points here, but 19 have been taken luckily. So I'll talk about my number one topic, which is...
Sorry, could we get your name and city of residence?
Oh, sorry. Cindy Victor. And I'm not a grandma, and I'm not retired yet, but close.
And your city of residence?
Kenmore.
Thank you.
Are we good? Okay. Number one, my number one topic is single-family home and the schools. Many, many items have been talked about, but I am, I'm very passionate about our schools. We moved here for that reason. And I know half of these people, and they all did too. And I don't feel that this plan is going to make our schools flourish. The nucleus of most suburbs are our schools. We, I know for myself and a lot of these ladies out here, we've all been to our PTA meetings. We grew up here. We were in our 20s and our 30s and our 40s and our 50s and such. But anyway, so we are very passionate about this area. And schools are important. And I know you're probably all, most parents, almost all of you are parents. I just can't think of anything worse than taking out some of the single-family homes, putting in the temporary, I call it temporary because they're probably not going to be there forever. I think they're moving, moving on. But I'm sticking up for these single-family homes because I happen to have one. I've been here for, like I said, 30 years. Well, our three boys, they went to school here from K through 12, as most of their friends did. And this is a good thing. I don't, I think that's, sometimes I think the single-family homeowner here kind of gets kind of a slap around, but I'm in, I'm in, I'm voting against this because I just think it's not going to be great for our schools. Let me just add this. We're all here for this reason, I think, most of us, because we want good schools. We want our kids to thrive. And you can see the passion in these voices, their faces. We're loyal. We're a sensible crowd, and we are valuable to this community. If we wanted to live elsewhere and have high rises or the middle, the middle community that you're talking about, we probably wouldn't live here. But I love living here, and I plan on being here another 30 years. And I don't mind growth, but I just want it to be more sensible. And I think we need to think about this a little bit longer because I think we are moving a little fast on this one. But thank you all for being here, and thanks for your time.
Thank you. Elizabeth Mooney, followed by Scott Horton, Steve Grimm, Nicholas Bilsov, and Abby Campa.
Before Ms. Mooney starts, Madam Clerk, I was curious, how many more folks do we have signed up, both in person and online? I'm trying to get a sense of how late we may be going.
Okay, let me go ahead and take stock. Standby.
Thank you.
I have four onsite guests wishing to speak, and unfortunately, we lost our virtual audience, but they are being redirected to City Hall if they wish to give testimony.
Okay. All right. Ms. Mooney?
My name is Elizabeth Mooney. I live in Kenmore. Hey, there's one great thing that you've accomplished, Staff Council Planning Commission. You brought a lot of people into City Hall. So yay for that. And I also want to say that I have spoken to some of you. I vehemently oppose this going forward, but I appreciate the different reasons that some of you have justified being in support or not in support. The solution, I believe, is what Mayor Baker, former Mayor Baker and Councilmember Marshall suggested a couple of weeks ago, which is you need more time. You need more time for people to understand you and maintain trust in staff as well. This was not what I wrote down, but I heard what John Hendrickson said about, and Debbie Bent, I've known you since the beginning of Kenmore. Kenmore was considered a drive-by city, but we've got a complicated city. And I'm not trying to disrespect Debbie Bent's comment back then, nor John Hendrickson's. But what I do think is you have a justification now for doing more about the type of thing that Lake Forest Park's doing. I don't think that the solution is, even the people who want to live here and who don't have the money to live here right now, the solution is not what the Growth Management Act, you think that by making more density here, you're going to be able to prevent sprawl going out in the, that's not happening with this plan, in my opinion. Okay, so here's what I wrote down. My name's Elizabeth Mooney. I lived in Kenmore since 95. My family at the pace at Lockwood Elementary School participated in salmon in the classroom and received a grant from King County Small Change for Big Difference with the city supported, which the city supported to restore and protect salmonids in the stream, Chet Shatle, AKA Little Creek on 61st Avenue Northeast in Kenmore. And if you don't know, that's the street that goes uphill from Loggloom Park, under Bothel Way, the fish barrier that Wash Dot has to make salmon passable, under Jack in the Box, and the Savage Moose, under 181st Street, on up to its headwaters in both Briar, by Abbey View Cemetery, once a peak peat bog, unincorporated Snohomish County, and even handles water released from Lake Forest Park's Horizon View Reservoir. It's a mighty courageous stream that proudly forged its own path by flooding back to its home at Loggloom Park despite having been channeled and blocked in the 70s when folks tried to over-control nature, blocked its Koho upstream passage. I'm proud to say I've tried to help that stream bring back a healthy run of Koho and Kokony. I don't want to give up that task, and I want others to join in this climate change world since our salmon and our streams need us more than ever to up our protections. I could tell you more about the streams, so, but suffice it to say it's home to salmonids, and now humans are threatening its health by removing pervious surface, likely cutting trees in order to use a one-size-fits-all method of missing-middle housing proposed by a firm that, in my opinion, does not understand salmon recovery, protection, nor the habitat with hills without buses, to name a few traits of Kenmore. And I don't think they understand Kenmore citizens. Nor do they see how many cars drive with more toxic runoff that kills salmon. We need more time and no more pressure from requirements to fit in density without first working with the community so we all understand each other and feel good about the environment in which we live. We're a complicated city. Our quality of life depends on talking to each other in post-COVID shutdown, reacquainting ourselves in spaces where we can do so safely, and walking those sites where we want to put more housing, be it missing-middle or affordable or single-family or business. But we want it to be healthy for living beings and fair and healthy for our environment. That is going to take time. I vehemently oppose to the present map. I would maybe suggest that at most, the council adopt what the planning commission recommended and not go one inch past that, since at least the changes were near transit. The emphasis by the city is presented from Opticus, named house scale, as if to imply that our citizens' major issue with density is solved by building triplexes. Actually, I don't think that's the problem, and we definitely need a different solution and thinking outside the box. I don't think Opticus rep understood Kenmore hills, streams. I'll send you the rest of this. So, and plus, please don't not, please don't not give us more time because the Public Works building that's up there, if that is the reason to push forward zoning, I think that's not fair. The Public Works could have been down where the industry is. I have a lot more. I'll send it by email.
Hi there. My name is Scott Horton. I've been a resident of Kenmore for 68 years. 68 years. I grew up on 61st Place Northeast. I now live a block away from there. And I have lived here my entire life, been here since 1954. I cherish Kenmore. I cherish its peacefulness and its community and its dynamic. And before I go any further, I want to thank you for this forum, and I can't imagine this is very fun for you at all. But I do want to say this. You provided us a forum to speak our minds, and we are a community, and that includes you and everybody out here. And I could shorten what I'm about to say by just telling you what they said. And I hope you're listening because this is your community, and you are a part of it. And I'm not going to shorten it because our neighbors, my wife and I, of 40 years, and our neighbors who I cherish, have discussed this rezoning initiative, and we keep coming back to the central question of why are we, why are we here? Why are we having this proposal? And I ask you, the council, is this solely to increase tax revenue at the expense of our current family communities and our cherished dynamic? And if so, why? When is enough enough? It's, you know, I've read this plan. I've read the literature that's come out. And in my mind, this plan does not address the perceived middle, the missing-middle housing issue. What it does is it increases the number of rentals, which we all know will not be affordable or increase any kind of ownership. What it does is it benefits developers and landowners, current landowners. And it says right in the literature that the multiplexes will be owned by one person. So what does that tell you? It tells you it's going to be rentals. And again, if it only benefits developers and landowners, why are we doing it? It's not, it's not solving the issue. It's been mentioned here ad nauseam that I don't see anything in the plan that addresses the infrastructure for schools, the infrastructure for roads. So again, why not put this up? If we are a community and you are our leaders, and you've been elected to do, to do what we think is right, why not put this up for a vote? Why not have the community decide if this is best for us and best for this area, rather than a forum of eight people? And I'm just going to say this, and I don't mean to make this personal, but I'm, a little bit I'm going to. Mayor Herbig, you came to my back door when you were running for this office. And you looked me in the eye, and you asked for my vote, and you said, you are a man that listens to the citizenry and his constituents in the area. And I would be willing to bet that every one of you put those words in your campaigns, that you were willing to listen and act on behalf of the citizenry. And I, I work on the belief that people want to do the right thing, and they want to be honest. So I'm asking you, all of you, are you going to stand behind what got you in office, and you're going to listen to the people that you lead? Thank you.
Hello, council. My name is Steve Grimm. I've been a Kenmore resident for 15 years. And I came from a place of density before I came to Kenmore. And the exact reason why I moved to Kenmore, because it was not what you all are proposing. When you live in those dense neighborhoods, they're loud, they're busy. As many people have said, they're full of cars, they're full of noise. I love my neighbors. Scott is my neighbor. Scott doesn't want to live so close to me that he hears my conversations through an open window. I don't think anybody wants that. I'm also an architect. I've been working in residential architecture for 30 years. Both single-family and the firm I work for does a lot of multifamily housing. I think, as many people have said, what you guys are hoping for with this housing is not going to solve the affordability crisis that you think it will. When I first started working in residential architecture, it was pretty easy to get a permit. It didn't take that long. Things have changed radically in that time. There was a very timely article in the New York Times just this past weekend about why do we not have more starter housing? And the answer from everybody was because it's just too darn expensive to build. There was a guy in Portland, a contractor in Portland, who's talking about $100,000 to buy the land, $40,000 to $50,000 in permits, and if I have to cut down a tree, it's another $16,000. So that kind of starting cost, before you even started building, and then you have all of this debt, and you have to service that debt while you're waiting maybe up to a year in some cases to get a permit, and then you have to build it. What happens to all of that debt that you've been servicing? You pass it on to the buyer or the renter. So we just make it too dang hard to build. It's an endemic problem in this part of the country, but also in many of the places that I go to. We work all over the country. And so that's a big problem. So, so these houses you're going to get, they're not going to be affordable. And as many people have said, they're, it's mostly going to be rentals. Who's going to own them? You all recently made it really hard for small landlords to protect their rights, protect their investments. So I don't see those people being super excited about owning these new duplexes and triplexes and renting them out. We're probably going to see institutional owners. And they are all about profit. They're all about maximizing their investments. So nothing about this is going to be cheap. We've heard from some people here who, we heard from one person who said, I moved to Kenmore, and because it was a single-family residential neighborhood, it makes me depressed. To that person, I say, well... To that person, I say, "Well, then why did you move here? If you want to live in a place with duplexes and more density, go there." It's like, you come into the neighborhood that I've been in for 15 years, and you think that you can tell me, "You have to change for me." No, I don't. I heard, I heard mention of people who were here first, and it's like, like darn right, I was here first, and I don't have to change just because you tell me that I have to change. No, I'm willing to work with people because I have a lot of experience to like find solutions, but to just come in and tell me that you have to change because I want you to? And the, just the secrecy with which all of this has happened, it seems like some people on this council have decided, "We're doing this no matter what, and we don't care what the people think." And as many people here tonight have said, you know, you, you were elected by us, you're supposed to represent us, and, and if you don't listen to us, there's more elections coming up. And I think you've heard from a lot of angry people here who are pretty fired up about that now. So please consider the will of the people who elected you. Thank you.
Well, I wasn't sure if that was, if I was called up or not, but yeah, Nicholas Bykove. I recently-
Can you speak into the mic, please?
Oh, yeah. My name's Nicholas, and well, I have lived in Washington for like, well, I guess, I've been since I was born here, but, but recently, because you're like, two to four years? Don't exactly remember. Apologies. Geez, from like, two to four years. Here's, with my family, because it was all more cheaper, but it's just, it definitely like puts more concern to me. And of course, I was here around like, I was like, an hour and 15 minutes late, so I wasn't too sure what was happening. But after, after like seeing like, yeah, I kind of started to see why. There was like, I have like a negative reaction. So, yeah, I kind of do agree with, with the community, you know, when it comes to it. And furthermore, I actually don't see the middle, the middle house working, the missing middle working out all too well with the current city, with the current city infrastru- infrastructure, with missing transit from trains, street trains, buses, well, limited bus transit, and it's more of, if there's like a lack of, of options for people to have that are faster than a car, then we'll just still take, we'll still take more cars. That's just pretty obvious. There's, and for some people, they say that they think they're going to be forced out of it. That's just how it would seem about that. So really, it's just, yeah, just kind of somehow make the other options more work faster, consistent, safer. And that means less people, there's people who don't want to be using a car, will not use a car, but for people who choose this style of the car and like using the car, they'll have a lot more, a lot more better cruising experience, you know, overall. That's how I would see it. But with the current city infrastructure that are not built for the person, but it was more built for the car currently, it's just not going to work with the, with the missing, with the missing middle. So that's why I'm, that's why I'm somewhat, that's why I'm somewhat opposed to this. Thank you.
I'm Abby London, and I just wanted to echo what everyone said, and also, I spent a lot of time last summer going door-to-door, meeting people. And though this is a smaller segment of the population, it really rings true with what I heard when talking to the community. They move here because they, they love having space and yards, and they don't have to stress out about their friend having somewhere to park when they come over. And I came from a congested area where I had to park one car two blocks away, walk in, and moving here was such a breath of fresh air and so peaceful and made me so happy. And I'm really concerned that if this passes, that Kenmore will become a place where people don't feel as invested, because they are looking for something else. They want to move somewhere else because it's too crowded. And then they won't feel as invested in the community, and that's not what I want to happen to this place. I'm also concerned that with the number of police we have per people who live here, adding more people is just going to be even less police per, per person that lives here. We're already about one per 2,000, and that's just not sustainable. Sidewalks are another concern, but I don't think would be a good thing to have more people, because there's already lots of broken sidewalks, and I hear complaints that people don't even use them because they've tripped and fallen. And there's people who have disabled kids, and they can't use the sidewalks around where they live, and I don't think adding more people is going to help with that, and that makes me really sad. Yeah, I've also talked to businesses in the community who have lost parking spaces due to residential parking requirements not being required, and I don't think that this is going, going to address that. I think it would be better to put apartment buildings on the 522 corridor and then go from there, maybe look at stuff like this later. So, thanks so much, everybody, for coming out. This is so inspiring to see the community come together like this, and I hope everyone has a great night.
Mayor Herbig, we did have some virtual guests that wrote in, and we have one virtual guest that just joined us on site, David Hollander. David, I'm butchering your last name, I'm so sorry.
I know it's a long night already. My name's Dave Hollander, I'm a proud Kenmore resident. One of my biggest concerns about this issue has been the integrity of the process. I know that's been mentioned already. Though I'm grateful for the forum and the opportunity to speak, calling for a public comment from your constituency at the 11th hour is really not proper representation. And failing to bring a change of this significance to a community vote is a failure in and of itself. Unfortunately, another failure of the process you've deemed appropriate has come to light tonight, as close to 60 individuals who were listening and hoping to express their views and opinions, as they are entitled to do, are now unable to do, unable to, due to a technical difficulty. I urge the council to postpone its vote, if for no other reason than to allow those individuals and others who may not yet be aware of this proposal to exercise their right to comment. Process aside, I oppose this sweeping change to our town's current zoning. It's my understanding that the primary and really only charge of this council is to protect and serve the interest of your current constituency. It's not an easy job, and it doesn't lend to easy answers. But I can't help but fear that this proposal is putting the interest of those who may want to live in Kenmore at some point and at some time before those who already call Kenmore home. I feel strongly that Kenmore has a role to play in our current housing crisis, and I'll admit, I'm not qualified or knowledgeable enough to know what that should look like. But I feel very strongly that this is not it, and this is not something that can be undone. Something this big deserves a vote. This community, people on both sides of this issue deserve a vote. Thanks.
At this time, we have no additional onsite public comments that have signed up. We do have one person requesting that their comments be read into the record, Ms. Valenzuela, who's, who was online with us.
Yeah, and I believe Ms. Hanson also.
Oh, yes, and Ms. Hanson as well. Can I read those now?
Yes, please.
This comment is from Stacy Valenzuela. She writes, "In the meeting earlier this month, a misleading statement was made in discussing of missing middle that regarding zoning of all R6 was needed for the comp plan deadline. However, there really is no need to rush to rezon the whole R6 zone or even full property on 202nd Street immediately, nor does the public works and the new affordable housing construction have to be held up on rezoning for the comp plan. The use of Plan B for public works using only 1.5 acres was, that was requested, can be done as that portion is already zoned for a public use. The comp plan can move forward, and I support with the missing middle zoning submitted by the Planning Commission, only allowing along the transit corridor as initial sample without rezoning the whole R6 zone. This rezoning determination should only be made after all the stakeholders are given consideration and put on the ballot. It should be called rezoning to clearly get true stakeholder vote. The presenter, September 21st author stated, 'These should include and add affordable housing units and be protected by several code standards. But Kenmore has been clear that these units will not be affordable in a blank, in a blanket zone. Since too many of these smaller housing options will be unattainable reach for most residents due to cost, really there will be a benefit for Kenmore quality of life.' Another good idea that has been misdirected. Part of the problem is misconstrued statements. Quoting, 'No one should be spending more than 30% on housing' may be true, however, some leaders and developers decided to include and build for only those in the 65th to 80% income level, while leaving those needing the smaller and affordable housing units out in cold, most over 50% of households earning 20K to 50K, do not qualify for their assistance and easily spend 55 to 80% income on housing alone. This is the true missing middle residents that end up in RVs, cars, camps, four living in one bedroom, or homeless, unable to sustain shelter. As well as terms that hides the issues from concerned residents, naming this missing middle instead of rezoning, all single-family housing should be pointed out. More time is needed to make sure codes are in place to prevent loopholes and protect our residents from control of homes by commercial corporations. Also, we need you to make sure protections for our residents, resources for extremes, trees, and prevention of destroying our ecosystems, shoreline, or cause future disaster due to terrain are part of these plans. Why has the affordable housing development plans by the Planning Commission not been brought forward for adoption? Too many public hearings seem to be just a formality. The residents concede decisions being made ignoring stakeholders representing one concept then changing plans without stakeholder consideration. Please take this opportunity to support the will of the people, Kenmore residents, and their concerns, who need to be counted and valued. Is your voice representing the people of Kenmore? Either adopt the Planning Commission missing middle along the transit corridor only, or pass with a nay vote. Thank you for your consideration, Stacy Valenzuela." This comment is submitted by Nancy Hansen. "To Mayor Herbig, council members and city staff, I just saw the notice at 7:00 PM that the meeting was in person, so I'm commenting by email here. I would like to thank all the staff who worked so hard for months on getting a plan that works on housing for the transportation requirements within such a very short window of time. I've talked to neighbors, and most are very understanding of the needs and supportive of the missing middle idea. The main concern has been the desire to protect the natural spaces that exist now in Kenmore. I do agree that being careful about protections of the trees that will bear salvation in the event of flooding, and wetlands serve a purpose also, but they're less well-understood, they're less well-understood as far as their function. We do need to learn more as a city, since Kenmore's land consists of a majority of wetlands and shoreline that needs better protection. I'm very happy to see that some of our Kenmore leaders are doing this. I think missing middle is the best answer to preserve the integrity of the neighborhood, and as was pointed out by the planners in charge, it helps to go at a slower pace. The presentation last Wednesday evening gave a great idea of the possibilities. I lived on Queen Anne in the 70s, and many of the ideas resemble housing that used to exist below the counterbalance, as well as other neighborhoods in Seattle. I especially like the smaller units placed within a courtyard setting, giving a sense of privacy and not exposed directly to a major street. People really want to see a variety such as already exists here. The zoning in critical areas is defined better in the latest draft, reflects better the need to use caution in development here. Thank you for that. And related to the permanent planning process, we need to make sure all wetlands and streams are updated on the Kenmore critical area maps. They have changed a lot due to development over the years, but the fact is, the water is still there. We may wish we had taken even better precautions, depending on what no one really knows about the actual extent of precipitation we will see as the weather continues to change. Thank you all for the incredible amounts of work that you do."
All right, before proceeding, I want to poll the council really quickly on a couple of things. One, do we want to continue the hearing next Monday for the folks who were virtual?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought. And then, two, do we want to remove item B in the business agenda and possibly move that to Monday as the CIP plan? Or we could run through all of that tonight also? But I've checked with staff, they say it's movable if we want to.
How long is it going to be?
Rob, how long do you think the CIP presentation's going to be?
Probably need a good half hour.
A small move. The other presentation that we're going to have should be relatively short tonight, so we could power through both if we wanted to, free up the time for, to continue public hearing. Okay. All right, with that out of the way, I think, Ms. Anderson, do you, I assume that we have questions from the council still and comments to be made? Yeah, I see, I see. Yeah, and before people leave, I do want to thank everybody who made it out here and spoke. We do listen, we do really appreciate you all taking the time. I know it's not easy to come down to city council on a, you know, Monday night and be down here for, you know, three-plus hours, so I really appreciate all of you and your tenacity, and, and I, I think I can speak with the council and say, "We are listening, we do appreciate your time and your input." Councilmember Baker?
Yeah. Given what we've inherited now, given the turnout, I really believe that we should-
Are you on, Mike? Councilmember Baker?
I would like to make a motion that we slow this down a little bit. There's only one section of the comp plan updates that are of concern, great concern, and I think we may be moving too fast, and we should slow this down a little bit.
I'm not sure exactly what that motion is asking for, though, specifically.
The motion is to slow the process down on the items on the comp plan update that deal with the R6 zoning.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second discussion. Councilmember Marshall, Councilmember Shrubnek.
Yeah, so at least it sounds like there's flexibility, because council member has not proposed a specific date, but I, I think, I'm convinced that there needs to be more time on this. So I think it would be a date to vote or not vote on the topic at a later time, other than we just got told about tonight, which is October 17th, I think, so even later than that.
Ms. City Manager, could you clarify what the current timeline is?
Yes, in fact, I'd like to hear from Ms. Bent and Ms. Anderson.
We're anticipating bringing this back for council discussion and direction on October 17th, and then depending on council's direction, the soonest we could bring back an ordinance would be November 7th.
And what is the deadline for getting the comp plan? To keep us on our current timeline for everything else that's tied up with the comp plan?
We were hoping to get direction on the comprehensive plan policies this year.
Okay, so we have, there's time in December if we decide we want to be in December.
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Shrubnek?
Yeah, Debbie, thank you for that clarification, and, you know, I was going to say something similar, that, you know, given that we're going to, you know, have a touch on this on the 17th, that's only to provide direction, we may or may not decide at that point, and then we would have another touch at it on November. I mean, to me, that feels like we're going to have several times where we're going to have touches on this. have touches on this, and all of that time between now and then, opportunities for public comment, including Monday, which we've extended the hearing. So I'm reluctant to push this off at this point. We may decide either on the 17th or the 7th to push it off, but it seems a little preemptive at this point when we haven't even heard from the rest of the public. So I guess I'm reserved, I would prefer to reserve judgment until we hear from the rest of the public.
Deputy Mayor?
I tend to agree with Councilmember Shrubnik, but I want to be clear that our community has been heard. The impacts of what we proposed, the difference in perception of what the impacts on our community is too great to move forward at the pace that we were looking at, at least in my opinion, though well-intended. So I do think we have time to continue discussion, but I think it's of utmost importance that our public recognizes that they've been heard today, that we are listening, and really take this initiative that you took to come forward very seriously, and I hope to see you here for more things. There are so many critical things for us to be engaged in in our world today, so please bring it forward on even greater issues such as climate change, and education, and environmental stewardship, and affordable housing. This was just a little puzzle piece from my perspective. It wasn't meant to be an overarching boon. It was opening the door for over the next 30 years incremental impact on R6. I just wanted to share that perception from me, but that's not how you saw it. I think it's really important for us as a council to recognize what you said and what your concerns are before moving forward. Hopefully, we can come to a middle, maybe the original Planning Commission citizen-informed more dense, located proposal is something that might work for our community, but hopefully in the next few weeks and coming months, we can come to something this year. So your voices matter. When I ran for public office, I said environmental stewardship, climate action, community, and equity. I believe missing middle does have a chance of meeting each of those things, and that's why I so strongly support it. But your voices matter, and I wrote that on every flyer. You're here, and this isn't about political party. This is about us wanting to have a future in Kenmore and in our world. We are a part of a greater thing than just this city, and what we do here matters. I am really, truly thankful. I really want to see more of you here raising your voices, so thank you.
Councilmember Baker?
Yeah, I think this is too huge an issue, changing the whole character of our community. I think we need more time. And maybe, Mrs. Bent, you can get with me and tell me why this part of that comp plan, the change in zoning from R6 to RM has to be done this year. I don't expect an answer now, but I would like to understand it.
Well, we'll certainly bring that back on the 17th, and given the discussion this evening, we'll also be bringing back a summary of the public comments, a summary of staff response for council to consider, and we'll also be bringing forward some options in terms of how council could move forward. That will also be part of the discussion on the 17th. So I do think that right now it's important to compile all those public comments, have those before council, and then also at that time on the 17th, have council consider options for moving forward. So I think it's sort of a little premature right now to kind of make a stand. We're not asking for that direction this evening.
Councilmember File?
Yeah, after hearing the public comment tonight, and there's, you know, more, plenty more persons online who didn't get to speak tonight, I'm happy that they're going to have the opportunity next week, let alone if any others want to come forward. I'm concerned that there seemed to be, you know, early pressure that we had to get this done, and otherwise we may lose our 100% affordable housing opportunity if we didn't submit at a certain time. That's my understanding. So I'm glad to hear that there's more flexibility. While we don't, we won't be taking any action right away, and we have opportunity to hear from the public and gather more input, I'm looking forward to those opportunities. It seems like if we need to do additional work, I could support a short delay, but it would have to get done this year, and I would hope to see it done in November, but not extend past that time.
You really want us to take a vote on whether, on ending discussion? It's a 2/3rds majority in discussions, you really want, I mean, we're going to be wrapped up pretty soon, councilmember. I believe we're almost there on this particular amendment, yes. Any further discussion? Okay, I, just for the, Councilmember Coogler?
I, um...
It's on the amendment, just...
What?
Just make sure we're all speaking to the amendment.
Just on the motion?
Yeah, yeah, correct.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, I also feel like, given what Debbie has shared with us, that I'd like to hear from the rest of the public, and also hear the different options of how we can move forward, and a more clear understanding of the timeline of what we need to get done before making a decision. So for those reasons, I just won't support this motion.
And I agree with my colleagues here. I think we do need more information about what our timeline could look like. We do need to meet an end-of-year deadline on the comp plan. We can only amend it once a year, so we can't make the many other changes that we're required to make or that we need to make by the end of the year and then do this one later. They're all tied together, unfortunately, with how our comp plan is, with how the state mandates that we do comp plan amendments. So for that reason, and especially seeing that we're not making a final decision for six weeks and we'll be extending the public hearing, I'm not going to support this motion at this time, but I do look forward to more information on what the timeline could look like and make sure that we are hearing from everybody. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Thank you, Mayor. On the motion to slow things down in the comp plan amendments dealing with R6 zoning, seconded by Councilmember Marshall, Councilmember Coogler?
No.
Deputy Mayor O'Kane?
No.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
No.
Mayor Herbig?
No.
With four noes, the motion fails.
Do we have any further discussion about the larger topic, or any other questions for Ms. Bent? Our city attorney's on speakerphone. Councilmember Marshall?
No, I was just going to say, I thought I heard this...
Yeah, no, we do, we do need a motion to extend the public hearing. So with that said, then, I would, the chair would entertain a motion to approve an ordinance, an order of continuance of tonight's scheduled public hearing on the topic of comprehensive plan amendments, including missing middle housing, to, hang on, I'm just making sure I get my dates right, to October 3rd at City Hall to begin at 7:00 PM, and to follow the procedures under state law to provide notice of the order of continuance.
So moved. Deputy Mayor?
In stereo.
Sorry, who seconded?
Councilmember File?
Thank you.
So we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion on the order of continuance? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next on the agenda, receive and file estimates of revenues and expenditures for the current 2021-2022 budget and the proposed 2023-2024 biennium budget for the City of Kenmore, Washington, presented by Finance Administration Director, Letizia Salcedo. Salcedo. Sorry, it's late and my tongue is tied right now.
I understand. I don't have a presentation.
Yes, we're doing both.
Oh, we are.
Is there any chance that we could postpone the CIP? It is getting late. We started at 5:30 this evening.
We could.
Yeah, I can, can I tell you what's planned?
Sure.
So next week, there is a public hearing on the CIP, and so we were going to introduce it to you tonight. Then you're going to have a CIP public hearing next week and possibly vote on it, but what we could do that is still have the public hearing, because it's already been noticed in the newspaper. We could introduce it and have the public hearing next week, and then you could vote on it at a future date.
Sounds great.
So you'll be happy to know that I don't have a PowerPoint, and it's going to be brief. So basically, what you have before you, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers, it is the estimate of revenues and expenditures that is required by statutory RCW 35A, which has statutory deadlines with regards to budget development, review, and approval, and so on. The first deadline that we have is the submittal and the filing of the estimate of revenues and expenditures for '21-'22, as well as the next biennium, '23-'24, for each fund. On October 3rd, we'll be coming back to council and providing the preliminary budget and a reading of the budget message. It will be followed by department presentations throughout October for all the departments, as well as public hearings for the proposed budget, the property tax levy, and the CIP, all parts of this major budget that we're working on for the next two years. Our goal is to have the final budget approved at the meeting of November 21. Now, with regards to the packet that you have before you, the estimate of revenues and expenditures, there is no expectation to digest at this point in time all of the numbers for all these years for each one of those funds. We'll be having budget presentations in October and November for each fund, each department, program, capital, capital improvement program, and property tax levy. At that time, you'll have the opportunity to examine in detail and ask questions with regards to every part of the budget. Just two things that I would like, three things that I would like to mention with regards to the budget that we're working on, it is at this point, through very hard work and cooperation with all the departments, a balanced budget. It includes the financial sustainability measures of bank capacity, surface water, management utility tax, and admissions tax. It includes one major expenditure, or the, one of the major expenditures increases is the police service contract, and that is reflected in this budget, a 14% increase in 2023, and then a 6% increase in 2024. These and other budget highlights will be reviewed with council, starting in our next council meeting. Questions?
Not seeing any. We look forward to all the work starting next week.
Yes, thank you, thank you so much.
And I appreciate all the work you've put into all of this, because I know that what you're bringing us next week was no small task, so thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it, of course.
All right, next on the agenda, staff reports.
Nothing, Your Honor.
All right, councilmember reports and comments. Councilmember Baker?
Uh, nothing.
Councilmember Marshall?
Wanted to remind everybody that our, City of Kenmore's contribution to the North Shore Parks Recreation Service area is coming up. I believe it's probably going to be either discussed or on a consent agenda soon. Is that right, Mr. City Manager?
Can you say it again? I'm sorry.
Yeah, NPRSA contribution from the City of Kenmore. I believe that was coming up soon through the interlocal agreement. I don't know if we're going to have it on consent or address it.
That is just not on my radar, but I, let me look into it.
Awesome, and, because it's helping contribute to the most recent meeting's work, which is prioritizing which tasks they're going to do to spend the public money to refurbish the senior center, and they're just about now getting close to finishing up with the overpass from the senior center to the annex, which is a long project. Also, the NPRSA is going to be getting funding from King County for a needs assessment for a youth recreation facility of some kind, and this can be programmatic, this could be a capital facility of some kind, and the request go to all our citizens as well, everything else that's on their agenda to comment on, to ask what would Kenmore like to see in a youth public recreation facility? So they're looking for that input. Thank you.
Councilmember Coogler?
I don't have anything to report tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
This week at GMPC, we're going to be, I think, taking a final swipe at the countywide planning policies, looking at a variety of issues around climate action and affordable housing, so it's actually going to be a pretty substantive meeting. I'll hopefully have something to report after that. And I've asked a few different ways, and I still haven't figured out how to actually make the transfer from Joe to me on the NPRSA. I think I'm supposed to be representing, but I have not figured out how to make that change, thank you. But, so if somebody could let me know, that'd be great.
Councilmember File?
Nothing for tonight, thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Nothing for this evening, thank you.
All right, I just have one quick thing I wanted to report, and this is mainly for the public, because I've already mentioned it to most of you, but I was at a, I did represent the city earlier today at a press conference that Executive Constantine had. There was a large group of electeds throughout King County, including myself and Mayor Sweet from Kirkland, and Mayor Scully from Shoreline, as well as people involved in labor, people involved in behavioral health, and public safety, and the executive was rolling out his proposed levy to fund crisis response centers throughout King County. We were, Mayor Sweet from Kirkland spoke on behalf of the northern cities that have all been working together to cite one in North King County, and at the end of the press conference, the executive said that he wanted to recognize our good work, and that in tomorrow's budget that he'll be rolling out, that there will be up to $11 million set aside to help us build that facility. So it's a wonderful little piece of news from the executive, and shows that sometimes planning and work really does pay off. So, anyway, with that, there's nothing further to come before us. The Kenmore City Council stands adjourned.